Lois, can you read the statement of certification of the meeting?
Certification meeting has been advertised according to sunshine law.
Please go a roll.
Mr. Neill.
Here.
Mr. Sealy.
Here.
Mr. DeGioia. Captain McHenry.
Here.
Mr. Conti.
Here.
Mr. Walsh.
Here.
Mrs. Shaw. Mr. Corvus. Mr. Bowe.
Here.
Mr. Sabriam. Mr. Rico. Mr. Erick.
Here.
Mr. DiBiase.
Here.
Mr. DeGioia.
Here. Can I have a motion for the approval of the March 8, 2018 regular meeting, March 29, 2018 special meeting?
Make the motion.
Give me like a second.
Second.
Please go a roll.
Mr. Neill.
Yes.
Mr. Sealy.
Yes.
Captain McHenry.
I have stand on the eighth of August on the 29th.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Mr. Bowe.
No part on the eighth there, yet on the 29th.
Another chairman comments, member board, if there was something else, Derek, if you'd like to...
Okay, it's April, and one on the New Jersey website, the 2018 financial disclosure forms are up.
Did you make a thumb?
I was just saying, on the New Jersey website, 2018 financial disclosure forms are up. All board members just need to go on and update the form for this year.
Yeah, members have to fill it out every year, financial disclosures with the state, and if you don't fill it out, you can get fined, so everybody try to do it in a timely manner. Thank you. Correspondents and payment of bills, any question or comments from anyone? Anything on the old business anyone like to bring up? Not under new business?
Mr. Chairman, for PV 218-01, that's 354-374 mainstream asset properties, I spoke to the attorney and told him that this application would take the evening, and he has agreed to have us carry the application until our next meeting, and he has waited the applicable time period, so if you would make that announcement so that no further notices would be needed, that would be appreciated.
Yeah, so this is going to be moved to our next regularly scheduled meeting next month, may intend without any further announcements. Applications before the board, we have the continuation of PV 2017-02-81, 179 Belmont Avenue, BOIV Bellevle MCM LLC for preliminary and final major site plan approval to construct a mixed-use development, multifamily residential and commercial use.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Councilman's name is Robert Gassion, the firm was Gassion for lot 0524 Union Avenue Bellevle. I represent the advocate in this matter, BOIV Bellevle MCB LLC. My clients are the owners of 81-179 Belmont Avenue. As I indicated the last time, my client is seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval in order to construct a misused development at the property on Belmont Avenue. The applicant is proposing that the one-story building be named and two new buildings be constructed. The existing masonry building is about 55,000 square feet and will continue to be used commercially. The proposed building A will have 4,500 or so square feet of commercial space and 132 dwellings. Proposed building B will have 1,500 plus square feet of commercial space and 100 residential units. At the last hearing, you heard from Ryan Stolar, the applicant representative, Scott Marasen, the architect, and Bob Byera, the site engineer. Tonight you will hear from the planner who originally... Oh, I'm sorry. Fifty thousand of a residential, of a commercial on that property, my apologies. Tonight they'll hear from the planner, who I did not plan to call because this is a compliant application. However, because of the questions raised about parking, despite the compliance to an excess, I will call Ed Colling to review parking. Bob Byera will be called back for just one or two questions. One, a question raised by Mr. Hans with regard to turning radius at one spot on the site, and a question raised by one of the board members with regard to snowing. Following, Ed will be the LSRP, Craig Gendron. Next, you'll hear from the traffic expert Craig Perrigo, and the last witness I plan to call is the landscape architect Mark Vazin. I'd call Ed Colling as my first witness.
So please raise your hand, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and all the truths I hope you got?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and spell your last name, David.
My name is Edward Colling, K-O-L-L-I-N-G.
Thank you.
Your occupation?
I am a licensed professional planner in the city of New Jersey, and also certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners, employed by Dresner-Robin with our headquarters in Jersey City.
And by, for how long have you been practicing as a professional planner?
I graduated from Rutgers in 1974. My first job was in August of that year in the Jersey Planning Division, and since then I've been a planner the whole time, so it's almost 40 years now.
And just briefly give the board the benefit of some of your experience.
Well, after being a staff, I'm staffed at Jersey City planning for five or six years, actually, I became the director of planning for the city of Jersey City where I served for about 40 years. I went through the private sector and worked with the firm in Thomas River, New Jersey called Bellevle's REIT and Associates. I then returned to the public sector, the city of Elizabeth, and was the director of economic development in that city for 10 years, from 1989 to 1999. Again, went to the private sector, and I've been in the private sector since then. I've been...
Mr. Chairman, accept it with this. That's the next one. You can accept that as an expert, you deal with a plan. Mr. Colling, would you review your role in this project?
Well, as I said, I work for Dresner-Robin, and we are also the site engineers, landscape architects, so we put together the whole site plan. So, a large part of my role was to review the redevelopment plan, review the development regulations, provide some advice and oversight to the engineers and site designers, and to ensure that we would be compliant with the redevelopment plan.
And have you reviewed the proposal before the board for consistency with the redevelopment plan?
Yes, I have.
And what was the result of that review?
Well, we're, not surprisingly, since we attempted to comply, we have complied with the goals and objectives as well. I can run through them quickly. The first one speaks about effectuating the redevelopment of underutilized properties. This property, in my opinion, is underutilized today. If you look at the land assessment, it's actually higher than the improvement assessment, and that's not a good thing. Always want to have a least equal or improve the value greater. This will do, will do that, this will be a redevelopment of that property. The plan talks about the transition of properties to uses that are more compatible with residential surroundings, the older end here, more residential land uses, and in addition, through the rearranging the site as it is, adding landscaping and buffering, I think we also that way become more compatible. Another goal is to capitalize on redevelopment areas proximity to the Silver Lake Light Rail Station. We're like 500 people, and that's exactly what this plan is developed for, is the architect develop the unit types, and as we develop the location of the buildings and where the proximity of the exit entrance from the residential buildings would be, they provide for great accessibility to the light rail station. The plan encourages the development of a mixed-use neighborhood, and that's exactly what this is going to be. The buildings themselves will have mixed, mixture of uses in them, and there's also the supermarket and commercial building that's there, this is going to be a mixed-use community that will help to support both the business and the residential aspects, because of convenience to the residents of the commercial facilities, and also the residents provide additional markets, so to speak, for the commercial that are there, and that's what the plan says as well. Enhancing community appearance. Today, the site is, it's an older site, the paving is older, there's large areas of vacant land, that's all going to be converted to new buildings and landscaped areas, and again, I just think that the appearance is going to greatly improve. And then, ensure that redevelopment projects within redevelopment area provide adequate facilities, including parking, resident amenities, and higher quality residential development, and that is what we're doing. We'll get into the parking more later, but we do exceed the parking requirements by 125 spaces, so I think we are more than, more than adequate. And then provide for the redevelopment of the redevelopment area that's consistent with the Bellevle Township master plan, Essex County master plan, and the state development redevelopment plan. And that's a, that's a matter of thought. Redevelopment plans always have to be that way, if you look at the redevelopment plan, there's a whole section at the end that specifies and stipulates how it is consistent with that, and so we, our development is as well.
And you've indicated obviously the development is consistent with the zoning of the redevelopment plan. How about the bulk requirements, do they comply with?
Yes, yes, we have no variances for the bulk requirements, we need the height, we need setbacks, we need the land coverage, building coverage compliance, we are complying.
And did you, subsequent to the last meeting, have a discussion with your clients where they advised you that there had been a question or two raised with regard to adequacy of parking?
Yes.
And as a result of that, did you do some studies in conjunction with that?
Yes, I did some, just some sort of general looking at some of the literature that's out there, also from my own experience as an urban planner over the years, and then did some more specific detailed analysis or census stat.
And did you, during the course of those studies, determine that there's a decline in auto ownership in New Jersey, and in particular, this area of New Jersey?
Yes, I mean, in general, I think in any urban or area, in any area that you find near, good public transportation, there's a distinct decline in automobile usage, in automobile ownership, especially of the younger generation, the, what is referred to commonly as millennials, it's just a whole different approach that they have. If I can go into that a little bit, you'll find that the millennial population, they have their, they're less likely to even get driverless. They take fewer trips and they're shorter cars. Recent article I read was that over the last few years, my number of miles driven by people under 34 actually dropped by 23 percent, they just don't drive as much or as far. Younger people are more likely to get around by their turn, turn vehicles, they'll walk, they'll bike, they'll transit, they'll use their skateboard, and I've seen it all, all the time, some of the communities that I work in and I live in. A research group called Frontier Group found that public transportation is up about 40 percent among the that age group, bicycling is up by 24 percent. And there are several, several reasons why this is occurring, just to think about it. There's the economic part, the cost of driving has gone up, it's expensive to drive a car, it's expensive to make car payments, it's expensive to make insurance payments, the rising cost of gas, and the cost, the cost of maintenance, so they are opting more and more for not only a car, because it makes more money available for their housing, their entertainment, their vacations, for other lifestyle enhancements, so they're just figuring, rather spend money on me, rather than spending money on my lifestyle, rather than spending my money on a piece of steel. And this technology, these, this generation is very much into cell phones, pads, all the apps, and now, there's ride sharing, like Uber and Lyft, so you can send a car on your phone, there's car sharing facilities, Zip Cars out there, people have heard of that, but Perks, iconic Enterprise, several others are launching businesses just like that, so it's more and more prevalent, and it's easy enough to get and to reserve cars that way. Technology also bolsters the use of mass transit, because you can go right on your phone, and look up when the next, next train is coming, when the, you know, what the bus schedules are, or things like that, so you can much more easily use even mass transit by the technology that's out there. And then there's also, what we call this dissociative, there were some studies that indicate that the people in that generation, rather than actually physically going to someone's home to visit, they'll do it via Skyping, or some webcams, or things like that, and they're able to have social interaction without even having to leave their apartment. So, then there's the cultural side, the cultural, they are deciding to live in transitory areas rather than further out from their transportation, more likely to live in denser transitory neighborhoods. So they suggest that they want, prefer to live in places that is easily walkable, with a bike, with a particular transportation, prefer a city sort of suburbs, apartment living, or detached homes, because less maintenance and such, and walk up to places that are rather, this is just the way that everyone's got, cars are not as important to them, they value their smartphone and their pads and their laptops more, it's not as simple, you know, as a status symbol or a car, a lot of people got these, these kids. So, there's really a genuine cultural shift, which I don't think is going to change in the future. And then there's even the idea of the, they're more, they're more in touch with the environment than rather, by not driving, than making less of an impact on the environment. So that's another thing that goes into it. So again, I think it's really more of a true cultural shift, that's the way that this bill, this, this plan has been developed, trying to appeal to that, that market, people like that, people who will live in this, if you, if you're a person or a family that has three cars, you're not going to rent in this place, you're going to live in a place that has more car. This is a transitory oriented development, it's being marketed transitory oriented to developers' development, and therefore, we anticipate that a significant portion of the people that live here won't have it.
You've obviously thoroughly explained the decline in auto ownership. Do you have any statistics to support your statements that you've made this before?
Yeah, yes, absolutely. And you'll find as we look at the U.S. Census Bureau, the American background database, you can, you can look up, they're called tenure, by vehicles available for occupied units, and they break down how many housing units have zero vehicle, vehicles, one, two, three, and surprisingly, you'll find that in almost every community, there's a significant percentage that had zero cars. And looking at Bellevle as an overall number, there's 12 percent of the households in Bellevle with no vehicles, 55 percent with one car, 28 percent with two cars, and only 5 percent with more. Now, that's a weighted average of about 1.3 per unit, but that's not taking into account the unit sizes, unit types, a lot of units, this was studied in this, we include, we include detached homes, and those are, it's logic families, and so we expect to have greater homeownership, or car ownership. But when we look specifically at Silver Lake, Silver Lake actually has its own designation as a census place, and because it is a recognized neighborhood, the, in that location, 34 percent of the households, and the renter population, not the, not the ownership population, but the rental population, this is a big, 34 percent had no vehicles, 47 percent had only one car, and 19 percent had two vehicles, no households had cars. So that middle range is only 0.85. We designed this to have as much as one car per household, we don't think we're going to need that, but the number of spaces that are there can accommodate that, so if a household is, is a car, there are these little households with none, and that'll be done through a parking management plan. Obviously, everybody who moves into this apartment complex is going to have a signed lease, they're going to have to tell us what their vehicles are, the management's going to be able to monitor it, and they'll be able to manage the parking in that way. So, I think that when we look at all those factors, the proximity of existing light rail station, the unit sizes, and how they, and how they've been marketed, our population have been marketed to, I think there's really well more than enough parking in this location and certainly enough to also accommodate any visitors for the commercial, because we exceed the requirement of total 125,000 spaces.
And can you tell the board the source of that information with regard to number of vehicles owned by renters?
It does, the country, the U.S. Census Bureau, they take the part of the surveys that are already filled out, again, there's a subset of data called tangible by vehicles availability, and a segment of the, of the survey, of the Census Bureau known as the American Community Survey, they continuously update that number and do estimates, and include updated population statistics, housing statistics, and others, other data, such as the automobile ownership.
And would you just tell the board what conclusions you have reached with regard to this application?
Well, you know, from a planning perspective, I think it's perfectly suited for, for this location. I think it's, if you look at, and if you look at your master plan, the master plan that was created in 2009, there's actually a specific reference to this property, or this area, including this property, and a specific reference to looking at transit village type development. So, it's consistent with the, you know, this wasn't just something that was made up out of thin air, it's consistent with the master plan that we've had in place for, you know, a few years, more than two years, so, showing that consistency with the redevelopment objectives, consistency with the master plan, and so, and also, it's perfectly geared for transitory development with the proximity to the station, and in addition, it's, it needs all the bulk criteria, so it's, it's just a well-done plan.
And no further questions in this witness?
I listened intently about your parking situation, and if you, if you drive around Bellevle at night, in Silver Lake, all over the town, you can't fit a car on a street in this town with a shoe rule. You know, and, like, they're only saying you need 100 and some odd cars, and they're going to regulate it, and they're going to sign leases, and they're going to sign that, so you go rent a, an apartment there, and you sign a lease that you only can have one car. Well, that's fine, because the rest of the people that are going to live there that have more than one car are just going to park on the street. You know, I, you know, you're saying the millennials and all that, my nephews are millennials, and they both own cars, so's my niece. I mean, I, the house next door to me has six cars in their driveway, the people who just moved in across the street from me have four cars, two fit in their driveway, two fit on the street.
Mr. Chair, do you live in a residential neighborhood, not an apartment?
It doesn't, it doesn't matter, Bob, you have an apartment here that's been here for almost 100 years on Rutgers and Washington Amu, and you can't find a parking space anywhere on Rutgers Street, you can't find a parking space on Lincoln Terrace, you can't find a parking space on Orvmore, because they don't have enough parking from when they were built, and now they're spread out all over the streets. I, I don't think the parking's going to work there.
First, the light rail is not next to Lincoln Terrace.
Yeah, I know that.
Second, these are hard statistics that were given to you with regard to number of vehicles owned by people in Silver Lake that are renters. You can check the statistics out, we're talking about 34 percent of the people who live in Silver Lake and are tenants don't own a car.
I don't believe that.
What, it comes from the Census?
I, I, the Census, the Census can't find people, let alone make records of them.
They make a tremendous effort to find people.
All right. That's all I have. Mr. Walsh?
Yes, I also listened in your arguments, a good argument for Census lower car ownership, there's going to be less need for parking. Just like in Field of Dreams, if you build it, they will come. If you put in these 100 and some odd extra parking spaces, you're going to find that people are going to the miss, the white rail station, and using those extra spaces as a parking lot.
We, we understand that that's, that's a possibility, and again, it's part, it's part of, part of that. No commercial user, no retail owner wants to have people park in front of their store long some of this time, because they want their customers to park there. So the management of this facility, they, they're going to monitor that, and they will not allow that to happen. They may have warrants, they may have warnings, you know, however they have, they have to do it, that will be taken care of the management.
They're certainly not going to let their tenants be deprived of the basic list by letting people park there all day and use the light rail. You can monitor that, you can't, you can monitor very easily and then toe them away, and then they'll stop doing it.
I'd like to know about daily basis, and I can tell you, I don't ever see anybody parking there on a light rail. I mean, I go by there a couple times a day, and nobody's doing it now. There's, the supermarket, as you know, a few cars, and I don't see anybody getting, parking their car getting on the light rail. So right now, I don't, I don't feel that would be a concern. Any other board members? No other board members have questions, we'll open it to the public for questions only. Questions only in this witness.
Good evening, Michael Sheldon, 47th Flight Street. During Mr. Colling's testimony, he made a very articulate argument that a large part of the demographic to be attracted to this complex would be millennials, and he went on to say that millennials, because they're younger, are more attuned to environmental concerns, and as a result, have fewer cars, they're trying to make a lesser carbon footprint. But I find it very poetically ironic, if not disingenuous, that the same millennials who are so concerned about the environment would elect to live on a site that is an active DEP contamination site, so I'm trying to reconcile their interest to minimize their carbon imprint by wanting to live on a site that is...
Obviously, that was not the testimony of this witness. He testified with regard to parking, and that's beyond the scope of cross-examination, it's cross-examination, and it's testifying at the wrong time if, if...
It's a question.
The gentleman is testifying.
Well, how do you, then I'll, I'll frame it as a question, how do you reconcile millennials, as you said, who are very environmentally conscious, wanting to live on a site that is potentially a major biohazard?
To best of my knowledge, it's not a potential biohazard.
Well, it's still listed by the New Jersey DEP as an active environmental...
Right, and what, and what we have here, and who will testify later, is a licensed site remediation professional, who will address that and explain how...
We're all waiting for that testimony.
...remediated and will not be a hazard to residential population.
We'll talk about this more later in the session, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Colling, you, I guess you visited the site?
Yes.
When?
I can't, I can't recall exactly when.
You mean the days of week?
Weekdays, it was definitely weekends.
You remember, you say you remember, you can't recall exactly.
Oh, you just said weekdays. My follow-up question, not the exact date, but what day, said weekdays. And you've reviewed this whole plan?
Yes.
Okay. The, one part of the plan is shared parking, are you familiar with that?
Yes, we have, there is, the plan itself, the redevelopment plan, referring to that versus the paper that's here, refers to encouraging shared parking. We have provided adequate parking for the residential uses and the commercial uses. However, in certain instances, if there's a need for people parking, so visitors or something, there's an ability for someone visiting a resident park in part of some of the commercial spaces, that's what we're putting in touch with about this shared parking.
All right, well, there's testimony, I don't know if you're aware of it, that the, the parking requirement were met because of shared parking, which means the...
I don't think that's a problem, I do not recall that being...
Can you let me finish my question?
I don't, you're stating a misfact, that was not what was said by the...
The plan, the food store and the apartments, will share certain parking places there.
No, the unique parking...
Yeah, you all shot, yeah, I mean, that was testified.
There's no question there could be shared parking, but that is not what was said, that there was inadequate parking, there's more than... There's more than adequate parking. We more than comply with the parking requirements. The shared parking is not necessary to comply, but shared parking makes it even better should some circumstance come up that requires additional parking.
Well, unless I broke the notes, I might, your experts testified that the way you comply with shared parking, I mean with the parking requirements, because they're going to be shared.
No.
Between the food store...
Nobody testified to that, to my recollection. My memory's not infallible, but nobody testified to that, to my recollection.
Okay. The, I mean, when is your plan, when is the busiest shopping day of the week?
Typically on Saturdays.
And is the public, the average people, the average work week, Monday to Friday?
Yes.
So then most people will be home on Saturdays, and that will be the busiest shopping day. There was also something by the owner, the developer, that there will be, I think he used the word "shared," but the way he said it was that cars are going to be parked there, and when somebody wanted to use them, there'd be a rental fee of like $14 a day, about, he estimated. Are you aware of that situation?
If there is, that's typically the, what I was referring to in my testimony, commonly called zip cars. I think Hertz has a company that has a version of theirs called Corner Car or something like that. But yes, that is something that you subscribe to. And if you don't own the car, but you have the right to use it and be able to reserve it, usually through your laptop, your pad, your cellphone, and... I don't know what the fees are, but that would be your hard stop.
Well, where did my daughter work for Hertz, when they instituted that program? The question is, where are they going to be parked, and how many will there be there?
He did not testify to that. He's not going to answer it quite because he doesn't know. He didn't testify to that.
Well, that's what I'm asking. Is he aware of it? The developer testified to it.
He said he's aware of the concept.
The developer testified.
He did.
Right, so I'm asking him. He can say he don't know, but let him answer the question. Are you aware of those cars? He's aware that those cars are available. Now, the owner said, I'm asking him if he's aware of what the owner, the developer testified to.
The redevelopment plan permits that. It does not require it. And I think that would be something that would be more properly answered by the owner, because owner's going to be the one who's going to manage the parking situation and therefore determine where those vehicles are.
Okay, so you can answer the question of how many and where those rental cars will be, zip cars or whatever they're called. You also mentioned this, the Belleville car ownership doesn't even refer to the census. The last census figure we have available, unless I've missed something, is 2008 years ago, correct?
Right.
Not 2000. 2000 is...
So 2000 years ago. 2000 in China.
2008 years ago, right?
Yes.
So that was, a lot of things changed.
Yeah, let's make sure.
Typically, if you look back at a census data, you'll see things that are fairly consistent over time. Or if they change, they don't change dramatically. It's evolutionary, not revolutionary. So you'll see certain consistency. I would doubt very much if the numbers were radically different today. If anything, I think it would be less a car ownership, because that's the trend.
Okay, so are you aware of part of the census gets though, for you?
Well, I've never been to a census collective, but they take these surveys, they send out surveys, and then people come to my door and ask me questions, so...
And you fill out, right? I've got them too. So when you get it, you put there, they insure age, it's not a distraction if you own a car. So you're told about it, okay? If somebody has a rental car, and it's not in his name, would that get counted in there? How would you count that, someone that owns a car?
I don't know how someone would decide to do it. Somebody, I think there's one car, so yes, I have a car, so maybe they... No, I don't own a car. Maybe they only have it for a given duration, and they would say, no, it's a lot. That variation of statistics is inconsequential. And I don't think that would make a big difference. We're talking about a survey of thousands, thousands, hundreds of thousands of people. So if there's a person that happens to have a rental car at that particular month, I don't think that's going to make a substantial difference in the statistics.
All right, I believe you just said the store owners are concerned about their business, and they will not allow parking upon their stores.
They would, obviously, they would prefer a lot to have non-petrons take up the space as a part of their store, because they own the business, they're selling goods and services to the general public. So they'd rather have those spaces closest to their stores available for that. And I think that's accounted for in the design, in where the residential parking is located to the perimeter of the site and within the residential buildings. And the commercial parking that's in front of the stores is laid out in such a way that it's more accessible to the people who live three point four stores.
I agree, sir. The store owner, I don't want him parking upon my store. Thank you.
The other?
Yeah, it is 1:48 right now. Maybe you said this before, but I may have missed it. How many parking stalls would be provided for the rental units in total?
Well, we have one space for every unit allocated.
Can you just give me the total number?
232.
232 parking stalls for the rental park? Okay, 232, thank you. Okay, how about for the proposed retail businesses on the ground floor? How many parking spaces?
Obviously, this witness didn't testify as to total number of parking spaces. So we'll do the best we can, but that testimony was put in by the engineer.
Do you know that number, counsel, to help us out?
The total is, I think, 489 between the two of us.
I want to know for the retail space, how many parking stalls?
If there are 480, I think I have 487.
487?
Altogether, 232 have been allocated for the residential. And that would leave 255 for the commercial. Now, as I said, as I said, this is all, this can, it's all how the parking is managed. So if we are correct, and I think we are, and 232 cars aren't there for the residents, some of those spaces could be used for other purposes, which could be for the more commercial parking or for shared use parking, this is any and everything. So we meet the criteria for both the commercial and the residential uses, and we exceed the total by 125.
So for the entire plant, including the grocery store, would be 487, correct?
487.
487. Okay, thank you, because the numbers keep shifting around. All right, can I ask another question?
Sure.
All right. What's the projection for the ingress and egress of cars from the parking lot onto Belmont, say during a typical weekday?
Objection. We had a question. That was testified to by the engineer, will be testified to by the traffic expert. This was the plan.
Was the answer given already by somebody else?
The attorney wasn't giving that after this witness.
The ingress and egress was described by the engineer. The traffic expert will be the next and the last witness. If you heard my opening, I said there'd be a traffic expert as a witness.
Oh, but you're the master planner, correct?
He is a planner.
Asking, can you...
Ms. Higgins, if you would just treat her with respect, please.
Are you the master planner, site planner?
I'm not the master planner.
Okay, what's your expertise in that? You can't answer a question about cars going in and out of the lot.
Ms. Higgins, that's going to be answered by the traffic expert.
Okay, thank you.
You can answer that later.
Thank you. He's next, right, traffic expert?
I think he's next to last.
Thank you.
I have a question, 132, Franklin Street. In regards to this lovely property with all these people that are taking the light rail system, which is a lovely system, have you personally ever taken it?
I haven't taken this system, but I've taken the Hudson-Bergen system.
Okay, lovely. I would suggest all of you take that. But now, all of these pipelines that they think that people are going to be coming down to go into taking the light rail system, where are these people going to park? If they're coming from other locations...
It's for the residents. I'm saying the residents are...
Okay, so, you know, I don't know if anyone can answer this, but as an example, you know, Mr. Ashon said, oh, you know, apartments, you know, they took the statistics from, you know... We live in an apartment, okay? And believe me, there's more than one car in each apartment. But again, if all these, if you're marketing this as a transportation hub, and you want people to use it as a transportation hub with conjunction with New Jersey Transit, where are all these people going to park their cars that are coming in? As an example, if you're...
Objection, Mr. Chairman. We're not providing parking for people that are using the light rail. We're providing parking for our residents.
Yeah, the light rail's already existing. It's there.
Right, no, I understand.
And you're not going to open up the parking to strangers. The parking's going to be for residents and patrons of the stores, not for...
A follow-up on the young lady.
Your name?
Of David Gennaro, 16th Street. How are you going to keep these light rail drivers who come to this transit location?
From parking, that question was asked and answered.
I'm asking the...
The question was asked by another...
Management, management...
Mr. Venero, you're the chair?
Yeah, management is going to...
It's your job to see that the residents of Belleville are allowed to ask questions of the witnesses. This man right here.
It's not his job to shoot every question.
And all I see here, as you're answering for the plaintiff, then we're having, when we ask a question of a witness, we have this gentleman, the attorney, be paid, I don't know what you get, $300, $400, $500 per hour, to interrupt and not answer questions. So why do you even have this question answered, period?
We opened up to the public, and you have to listen. The questions were answered. What was your question? He said management would monitor it. They're not going to let people park there. There's nobody parking there now using the light rail.
How are you going to keep people out of the grocery store parking lot? People, I mean, get wise to it. You can't totally park anywhere in the neighborhood.
Are you familiar with that area?
Yeah.
There's no parking in that area? You drive through there and find no parking?
It's very difficult, I think, yeah.
Really? Because I drive there. I live two blocks from there, and I work about half a mile from there. And I don't ever see a problem with parking there.
Now, can I...
At this time.
Can I point out what you're doing right now, Mr. Chairman? You're advocating for the problem.
I'm not. I'm just trying to state the facts. You're saying that there's no parking there now. I drive by it on a daily basis, and I don't feel that that's a problem right now, that there's no parking at that store now. Just from my personal experience.
For the grocery store.
Right.
But hopefully, the grocery store is going to be an improvement, right? Isn't it going to be upgraded?
Part of the plan is to improve the parents, the side, and the parking lot.
I thought you, as a planner, kind of oversaw the whole thing, the engineering, the architecture, is that true?
No. I would not be able to deal with the issues.
You've never ridden the, you've never ridden the New Jersey Transit?
I have ridden the New Jersey Transit. I have ridden that particular line at that particular location.
Light rail?
Right, I've ridden the light rail.
New Jersey... Seems like you haven't really been to the property recently. You don't know the neighborhood.
You're just making things up.
You do know the neighborhood?
No, you're just making things up. You're just saying...
No, your end is making things up. That's the problem.
This man is...
What's your question?
This is an irrelevant witness, I got to tell you.
What's your question?
He comes here to tell us, you know, superfluous stuff based on a census from eight years ago. You know, I remember filling out the census. I don't remember putting down how many cars I own.
Can we get a question?
So do we have it in, can we get a copy of the documentation even from eight years ago of this?
It's sure as publicly available, the US Census. I'm sure you could go online or look up the US's.
From the witness. And not from you. I'll tell you the truth again, Mr. Venero. You're advocating for the plaintiff.
I'm not advocating. I'm just trying to express that I see it here.
You are. Your mind is made up.
My mind's made up, okay.
That's what we've seen. People swarmed out of here last time because they see it.
Can you ask a question? Is that attacking somebody on the board?
Because I just started out asking one question, and you attacked me.
Because you interrupted me.
You interrupted me. And I'm saying, this should be for the residents to ask questions of the witness of what he testified to.
What's the question, please?
So you're a planner. Do you have any thoughts on whether or not this structure should have solar energy?
Objection. He did not testify to that. He has nothing to do with that.
Should it have solar? I really couldn't say for taking sure. There's many ways you could address environmental or green development.
So you're thinking a lot of cars, a lot of people won't have cars who live there. Do we know what the cost of these rentals would be, sir?
I don't know. I'm a planner, I'm not the real estate marketer personally.
Right, but isn't there an issue in New Jersey regarding affordable housing?
In some places...
Laws are applying, you know, rulings are applying out.
My resolution is, you're doing the national plan, it's that there is not a responsibility for reconstruction. There's a green construction, you know, the...
So you're thinking people will have bicycles who live there?
I don't think, I don't know everyone would have them, but yes, absolutely. There'll be people there who own a bicycle and don't own a car. There'll be people who own the bicycle.
Are there bikers?
Yes, there are.
Yes. Bike racks, bike racks or... I also noticed, as this gentleman pointed out, that you said the people who will come there will be more in touch with the environment.
I didn't say that exactly. I said that a lot of times, one of the factors that plays into why younger Americans, millennials and that age group, may not drive as much or drive as many cars as much is because they're conscious of the pollution that could occur or impacts on...
But as the gentleman pointed out, the site is polluted.
We're going to have an expert.
I didn't testify to that.
Yeah, when is that, what time is that going to come on? Depends on how long it takes to ask you a question. Do you know the grocery store hours?
It may be helpful on the environmental issue for us to focus on.
Do you know whether or not...
Excuse me one second. The attorney just wants to make a statement.
Yes, Mr. Beasley.
It may be helpful for all of us to understand that this board does not have any jurisdiction over any environmental issues. So that if any application were approved by Board of Adjustment and Planning Board, it is subject to DEP approval, and that no project can start until there is DEP approval. So we're going to get information on assuming that will be informational purposes. But the only thing we can do is make it subject to if the board approves. And if the board disapproves, then of course, everything becomes moot. And that is important for all of us here.
You can't make that a priority?
I'm sorry?
You as a board, as a planning board, can't make environmental conditions a priority?
It's not the state of New Jersey. It's stringent.
And you don't care about the environmental situation?
I'm going to say this again. We don't have jurisdiction. There's nothing to do about whether we're interested or not. We're all interested in the environment. We can't make any rulings on it.
It sounds like you're...
All we can do is make it subject to.
New Jersey has some of the strictest environmental laws in the country, in the country. New Jersey ships all the contaminated dirt out to Pennsylvania because Pennsylvania doesn't consider it contaminated. So we have some of the strictest laws in the country. It's not up to a local planning board to decide, is this contaminated or not? It's up to the state of New Jersey.
Governor Christie weakened a lot of those standards. Have you given any consideration to a health hub, taking residents in the retail space? Something, you know, like there's one up on Franklin.
It's permitted within redevelopment plan, it's a possible use.
How many hundreds of cars that would, you know, require hours of operations?
Is that a question? I'm sorry.
Yeah. Have you considered any of that? Do you have any information?
He has not testified how the health hub would run. So the only testimony with regard to potential health hub came from the owner representative. When you ask him a question, you're supposed to be asking him questions on what he testified to.
Well, you mean we can't ask him whether or not he's considering some of these things?
He has to make the decision whether there's a health hub there or not. He's the planner.
But he has to consider all the eventualities, right? The decision as to who's going to be there is going to be by membership. Thank you.
Just one, one quick follow-up question. And I apologize if you've already given this answer, is there currently an existing rail stop or station adjacent, for the light rail system, adjacent to this property? Is there, is there currently a station there or...
It's more or less diagonally across the street on Belmont, and so if you were walking away from the site...
Could you just, with that, could you just point to the location of the stop?
So what exhibit are you referring to for the record?
There's a, there's a photograph marked 8-4. And the light rail station is just to the east of Belmont. It's with, it's less than, it's less than a couple hundred feet from the, from the boundary.
Anyone parking in the current lot, correct me if I'm wrong, they would have enormous difficulty getting from the existing parking lot to that rail station because they would have to trek across the site that is currently being hypothetically remediated by the DEP, or is being monitored by the DEP. In other words, there's no easy means of access from the existing parking lot to the rail station, you would have to go through some circuitous route to get from the parking lot, the current parking lot, to that right rail station. What I'm, what I'm about to argue is that...
If you would, the engineer testified exactly to what the path was. If you want me, after this witness is done, if you want me to recall the engineer, I'll have him retestify to the path, the walking path to the station.
I would appreciate, but all I would like to ask is, if this project is realized, you would then be making it much, much easier for anyone choosing to park in this facility to get to that light rail station. And as what Mr. Yenyer and others were trying to say, if I can speak on their behalf, is that this project will, by its nature, attract many more people to the facility to take advantage of that light rail station, and as a result, they will be impacting the existing parking.
When you say attract many more people, you mean residents to this facility?
No, non-residents, non-residents who will be using...
That question's been asked and answered as to what will happen.
There's a shared parking area, 194 spots between the existing supermarket and your proposed structure.
Again, that question's been asked and answered.
But that's public space, it's not going to be controlled by anyone, that's, that's publicly accessible space. So what's gonna stop somebody from saying, oh, they've got this area all cleaned up?
The owner of the property is gonna stop it by saying they're gonna monitor what goes on there. And if it's somebody other than a customer or a tenant, they're gonna have their vehicle removed, and that's what was testified to.
So, there's gonna be signage going up saying that if you're going to use a supermarket, you only have...
Depends on whether there's a problem or not.
Well...
If there's a problem, then they will.
We know what human nature is, as Councilman Kennedy and others have alluded, this project as constituted, many of us believe that you're going to see many, many more vehicles in this, using this facility than what you would theorize.
The investment that my client is making, that he will care about having parking for his customers?
Mr. Gass, you know, I'm not as experienced admittedly as you are, I've only been involved with the zoning board and matters like this for a few years. But we know you and your clients always greatly underestimate the true impact of parking.
I don't agree with your statement about my clients, this is one application. We're dealing with an application tonight.
It's, it's, you always lowball the actual number of cars.
I absolutely disagree with you.
All right, well, you disagree with people.
I tried to give an honest estimate, I have my witnesses giving honest estimates.
You always use the most, most underrepresented estimates in, in coming up with these calculations.
I obviously don't agree with that, and you just got statistics from the planner.
When you're with the parking, we'll come back to this, thank you.
Frank Fleisch from 132 Franklin Street. Sir, and you might, you might be answering this survey, you, you mentioned these statistics from the census and sort of thing. You also spoke about general demographic trends with the millennials, okay, can you cite some of your sources on that?
It's just from general, from reading, different reading sources, planning magazines, newspaper articles, things like that. Because I'm a planner, I see gallo articles like that and I, and I read them.
You, you mentioned before, from another, another question, that you visit the site on weekdays, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. Did you perhaps take a look at, during those times, did you perhaps look at the traffic on Belmont Avenue?
The traffic on Belmont Avenue?
Yes, did you notice it?
Well, I did, there was, there really was very little traffic. Probably at the times I was there, because it was weekdays, the store was not, you know, very busy, parking lot was relatively empty. I was there, I'm driving very easily, I'd park wherever I wanted, walk around the, the site.
Just a point of order, Board, if I might, Mr. Gass, one of your clients, Mr. Stolar, was laughing at one of the questions before. I would suggest that you counsel your client, that it may not harm his argument with the board, but if he's trying to be a good neighbor to the residents of Belleville, he might want to have a little bit more of a respect for, so, from the Belleville citizens, thank you.
If there's no further questions of this witness from the public, we're gonna take a short five-minute break for our...
As I see it, it's what council sees it, the environmental matter is a decision made by the LSRP or by the DEP. It is not a board decision. All the board can do, and I don't think it's overboard anyway, is condition any approval on our compliance with the LSRP or the DEP. But, for information purposes, in order to try to answer questions of witnesses, I'll go out of order, the interested citizens, I'll go out of order and call out the LSRP.
Please raise your right hand, sir, do you swear to tell the truth to the whole group of people that you help you out?
Yes.
Please state your name and spell your last name and your...
Craig Gendron, G E N, D O N, O M.
Thank you.
What is your occupation, Mr. Gendron?
I'm an environmental consultant.
Now, where do you provide your service?
Primarily in New Jersey, New York, and throughout New England.
And for how long have you been practicing as an LSRP?
The program began in 2012, that's when the first licenses were allowed, and that's when I got my license. So I started with the LSRP program in 2012. And over that period and before that period, I've been practicing environmental consulting, again, in New York, New Jersey, and throughout New England for about three years.
For what school did you graduate?
I've got a master's in civil engineering with a candidate fate and transport from the University of Illinois. And I've got a bachelor of science in geological engineering from the Colorado School of Mines.
Are you a licensed remediation professional?
I'm also a licensed engineer of the state of New Jersey.
I am. Can you briefly give the board benefit of some of your experiences in LSRP?
Yeah, LSRP, like I say, since 2012, I've been managing sites in New Jersey. I've got probably a dozen right now active sites that I am responsible for. I've had over the years, up to 20 at times. And in addition to that, as I said, I've been practicing in New Jersey even before the LSRP program began. And I have dozens of sites that I've investigated and remediated. And that experience has stretched from the first stages of the site work, which are preliminary assessments, all the way through RAOs, which are response action outcome statements, which are the final documents for the sites.
And testify, there's only one...
I have.
Except that as an expert, the LSRP? Mr. Chairman, I submit that my witnesses qualified because of LSRP and an engineer.
Well, except your witness as an expert, can you state for the public what LSRP stands for?
Licensed Site Remediation Professional.
Everybody got that? That's what the LSRP is.
Thank you. What does an LSRP do?
Under the LSRP program, and under the statute that enabled that particular program, the LSRP is given the opportunity to lead the investigation and remediation of impacted properties. So we're able to go forward with cleanups without DEP approval under most circumstances. There are places where if variances are required, then the DEP gets involved, and certainly when...
Oh, that's right, which is variances, it doesn't need variances before boards.
That's right, variance to the rules that guide the remediation program. So, our role on these is to protect human health and the environment, that's our primary responsibility. And under the enabling regulations, there are opportunities for us, as I said, to proceed with this work without DEP approval. And again, under circumstances where we vary from the regulations, that's when the DEP can get involved.
Want to reiterate, your primary responsibility is to protect human health and the environment, is that correct?
That's right.
What information materials did you review prior to commencing your investigation?
On this particular site, we reviewed preliminary assessment work that had been done before we started. We reviewed site investigation information, that's would be monitoring wells and soil boring information. We reviewed sandworm maps, historical aerial photos, topograph maps, all of that work was done before we engaged with the site.
And did you, what, strike it, would you give us a brief history of the property?
Yeah, the property up until about 1970, and that would be from the early 1900s to 19, approximately 1970, our research has shown that it was operated as a portion of the factory manufacturing operation. From about 1970 to close to 1980, the property was being demolished, building structures were being moved. And in about 1980, that's when the supermarket store, which was when it started there, but that's when the supermarket was established. So the supermarket is a pathmine, the supermarket has been there from 1980 till the present under various names. As a piece of that supermarket store, there was a dry cleaning operation that was at one end of the supermarket.
And did you do a remedial investigation after being engaged?
Yes, we did.
And maybe what your remedial investigation revealed?
Yeah, first of all, the remedial investigation was completed, the report was issued to the DEP in May of 2007, so just correct me. But in general, we put in soil boring, soil boreings, we put in monitoring wells. Roughly 90 soil boreings or wells have been installed across that property. Approximately 250 soil and/or groundwater samples have been collected over our tenure at this site. So through that information, we were able to investigate under the rules that guide our activities and delineate the various issues that we encountered at the site.
Is there historic fill in the property?
Yes, there is, the, the issues that we uncovered through that extensive investigation included site-wide historic fill. It included two areas of soil impacts that required remediation. And it also, we also found two areas of groundwater impacts that are requiring remediation as well.
And just to play briefly for the benefit of the board, what is your source?
In historic fill, it's got a very specific definition within the technical regulations that guide the work that I do as an LSRP. Historic fill is fill that it could draw onto the property, and in order to raise the grades, allow for eventual development. And a key aspect of that is, if it's impacted and found to be impacted on site, it needs to be impacted before it gets placed on the property. So this is not fill that's been impacted by site operations, it's fill that's been impacted before it was placed.
And that would require remediation?
If it's impacted and found to be impacted, yes.
And would the planned environmental remediation be compatible with residential development?
It's interesting, in the technical requirements for second remediation, which are the prevailing regulations that I am bound to follow as an LSRP, there's a specific requirement regarding residential development on historic fill. And in general, the, the two requirements that are in place in order to allow for that development to happen are what they call presumptive remedies. And there's two things, there's engineering controls and there's institutional controls. On the engineering control side, that needs putting in barriers, buffers and barriers in order to eliminate potential contact with the soil, right? That's on the engineering side. On the institutional side, there are what they call classification exception areas that allow for the groundwater that's impacted by the historic fill to be there and be managed and be isolated from people actually interacting with it. So, you can't put in drinking water wells, you can't excavate down to the water table and drink the water. Those are the requirements that allow for the development of sites like this to be placed on historic fill.
Was the fill removed from the site? Or soil removed from the site?
Yes, as part of the remedial actions that have already been undertaken at the site, there's been about 355 tons of petroleum impacted soil that was uncovered during the investigation, that has already been removed. There was about six tons of solid impacted soil that associated with the water map that has been removed from the site. So those are the two actions that have been completed.
Is historic fill very prevalent in Northern New Jersey?
Especially in Northern New Jersey, there's historic fill maps that are available to the public that show where the DEP, even without any sampling data, has, has determined there'd be the presence of historic fill. And the way they do that, they look at historical topo maps, they look at over the years of development, and in areas that have, where the grades have been raised a certain amount, those are the areas that they've identified as potential historic fill areas.
You talked about remedial large soil, what remedial action needs to be completed?
So, the actions that remain on the site in order to get to closure under the LSRP program are several-fold. One, it's the historic fill, which needs to be managed so that it can be accommodated and developed, and also be remediated in accordance with the regulations. That's one piece of it. Another piece of it are two areas of groundwater impacts that aren't under any of the existing or proposed, not under any of the proposed development areas, but they're groundwater impacts that remain on the site and need to be managed, monitored, and developed as well.
Would you come engaged to ensure compliance with all PPT requirements in order to proceed with construction and eventual occupancy with the building?
Yes, it's, it's part of my primary responsibility. It's to, for this particular site and for any site of which I'm the LSRP. It's number one, as I mentioned, protecting the health and the environment, all the way through the end and through closure of these properties. So, yes, in this case, that is my, one of my primary roles, is to make sure as part of the closure of the property that it's available for the property development, which is the plan here, and also to make sure a few times monitored and closed in accordance with rules.
In order to commence construction, does the DEP have to approve the project?
No, not through, and let me, let me give some information around that. As I mentioned, we are putting in, and the plan is to follow the regulations in terms of what's required to move forward with residential development over historic fill. The regulations are very clear as to exactly what has to be in place, all the way down to thicknesses of barriers and buffers and demarcation layers, down to the kinds of permits that will be required in order to enable that particular type of development. So, the plan is to follow the regulations to a T, monitored by the LSRP to make sure it's done properly, not ask for any variances to the technical regulations, which is where the DEP would have to get involved, but that's not the plan here. So, up to the point that we're able to ensure that those engineering controls and institutional controls are enabled. Once that's in place, development can proceed.
Okay, you indicated you want to ensure that it moves to comply with, so, are you engaged to ensure all necessary safety protocols to comply with and all relevant regulations?
Yes.
And when do you think the act can commence site work at the site, site work at the site?
Yeah, the, the site work can begin, you know, once the, once the development plan is, is approved by, assuming it gets approved by the board, we'll have the information we need to then work with the civil engineers to make sure that the engineering controls are designed and implemented once those designs and implementation plans are in place. The process is that we develop a remedial action work plan that incorporates those necessary engineering controls. And we have to issue that 60 days before, to the DEP, 60 days before the actual construction commences. And that's the only time requirement.
And subsequently to that, when can actual construction of the buildings commence?
Yeah, the, the construction of the buildings, the real issue there is, you don't want to start the building construction including verifying that all the engineering controls are in place. Engineering controls, as I said, are specific thicknesses of buffers and barriers to ensure that the public and anybody else can't intercept the historic fill. So, once those foundations, walkways, landscape areas, those are the elements of the engineering control, once those are all in place, inspected by the LSRP myself, to make sure that they're exactly in accordance with the remedial action work plan, that's when the actual building construction can begin.
No further questions, Mr. Chairman?
Assume that's it.
You said there's more soil to be removed, is there more remedial, remediation to be done?
There's, there's no more soil, to, under the plan that we have, there's no more soil that's impacted that is required to be removed. The plan is to leave the historic fill in place and provide the barriers and engineering controls that are required to allow for the development to happen without moving it off-site.
And you said approximately 355 tons has already been removed?
361, there's six chlorinated, some 355. Uh, 361, there's six of chlorinated, some 355 of the soil.
What types of contaminations may be found in the historic?
Yeah, the historic fill is, by many sites that I've dealt with, especially in Essex Valley, there are a group of metals, typical metals, you know, copper, zinc, all kinds of metals that are there. In addition, there's compounds called polyfluoridic aromatic pyroton, PAHs. And just as a little bit of context here, the rules don't even, if you have a site where you've identified historic fill, in this case, we have, we've got boreings all over the property. We have it monitored from one end to the other, and we found historic fill in every, almost everything, a boring on the property. We know it's historic fill, it's got the exact signature of the way it's described in the regulations. It's got cinders, it's got ash, it's got demolition debris, it's got all of the things that classify, allowed us to classify as historic fill. So the site is holding, all right? The, where I was going with this is if you've identified visually, the rules don't even require you to sample in order to get closure of it. It's just assumed to be impacted because there's been so many studies of it over the years, and it's so prevalent that it's not even deemed necessary to sample to figure out all of the constituents that are there. All that you do is you assume in the, in the permit documents that it's impacted with metals and PAHs. That's what you can do.
Would the fact that the actual housing units are elevated aid in, the fact that the housing units are elevated, would that aid in separating the dwellings from any potential contaminants?
Absolutely. The whole idea of what the DEP requires and we have to implement is separation, okay? It's separating the public from the historic fill. So whether it's foundations and subgrid, clean fill subgrid, or whether it's a walkway, pavers and a foot of clean soil, or landscape barriers that draw lanes to this plan here, any one of those or all of those can constitute a barrier between the public and the impacted soil, which is the historic fill.
You say you took 250 soil samples, so you're not just assuming it's historic fill? Was there a chance that there, there's other contamination, meaning it was a battery?
So, just to clarify, it was 250 total, so 125 soil, 125 water, just to keep the records straight. But with all of that sampling there, we were looking for anything and everything at the property. So we didn't go there just to investigate historic fill. We went there to investigate whatever could have been discharged on that property.
Of different sorts?
Uh, we've got a couple that are around 40 to 50 feet deep. Most of them, because the water table there, if you're familiar with the area, six feet deep to water, so we don't have to go very far to figure out what's going on. So most of them are within 15 feet, 20 feet, a few that are down to 35 or 40 feet.
And out of those samples, was there anything that came to your surprise, anything out of the ordinary, or?
No, the, the, what we found is that the distribution of impacts in that historic fill layer, which is about 60 feet at the site roughly, was that it was ubiquitous. We didn't find hot spots of metals here and not over there. We found it over the entire site, similar, you know, arrangement of metals, similar arrangement of periodages, which makes complete sense that this is historic fill, issues that we're dealing with. So, can that answer your question?
Any other members?
I think you said there were still two groundwater areas. Can you show me where they are?
Uh, sure. So I had mentioned also that there was, I'll do it here, then I'll do it there.
Just tell us what exhibit that is of.
Uh, Exhibit A3. So, so there were two areas where we removed soil. I mentioned six tons roughly. That was over here. This, this was the former dry cleaning area. So there was about six tons of soil. I'm going to get your answer. I'm describing what the source of those issues were that had been removed now. So it's about six tons of soil, of chlorinated soils that were removed there. So that was right around that area right there. And then there were 255 roughly, tons of petroleum impacted soils that were removed right up in this area here, and I'll point it out in the board in a second, so up in that general area. Doing that to show you what, up here was a petroleum. So, so that soil had to go, okay? It wasn't historic fill that you could leave, it was impacts that were placed there, not purposely, probably, but were there. Those soils have been removed here, the soils have been removed there. But before we got to them, because this probably happened decades ago, it left behind a signature of solid impact, very dilute, but nevertheless above the very stringent standards that New Jersey has that exists below this building here, okay? Below the supermarket, okay? No further, does not go offsite, stays in this area. Over time, that has been getting less and less in concentration and it's moving in the right direction, so we're going to continue to monitor that. This area here, okay, what I just pointed out was the chlorinated area right over here. I know it's not ridiculous, but that's what it is. Pointer's probably not that accurate. The other area, there's petroleum impacts here that I mentioned that have been removed. That area's impact extends down to kind of right where the concrete blockway is, so it's a smaller pool, but it's right over in this area here. I'm describing area petroleum impacted water that extends right in this general vicinity here. It's monitored by a number of wells. The sources, we believe, have been removed now. The water quality is improving since the removal, so we're going to continue to monitor and hope, not hope, but we're planning that that's going to naturally attenuate over time. So those are the two areas.
You do have monitoring wells along that back property. They're joining public service, right?
We do.
I know public service removed a large quantity of contaminated material a couple, like two, three years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's monitored, that's monitored.
Yeah, do you need more on the board?
Yeah, okay, next question. Would excess drainage into that area or as one you showed, would that seep down and dissipate?
Excess drainage from what?
It was previously testified, I believe, that under that parkport, they're going to be putting a flat curve so all the water from the parking lot will drain into that green area.
Yeah, I'm not 100% knowledgeable about the drainage that's going to happen there. The civil can certainly answer some of that information. As I understood it, it was going to go to a detention, a subsurface detention basin and then shuffle offsite. That's what I understood. So that wouldn't impact.
But they made a comment that they were putting in a flat curve to drain into that green area just to.
Yeah, I'm not.
Drain it just go into the ground?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with that. From what you're describing, there's all pavement in that general area, it's going to remain pavement, it's going to be drained and sold with a subsurface disposal system that will then lead to a drainage basin which will be offsite. So I'm not anticipating any issues.
So it was testified and said it was going to be a flat curve.
I'm not disputing that that may be the answer that you described there, but what I'm saying is if it's that small area in that green area there that you're talking about, in my view, that probably wouldn't have any impact anyway, but that's definitely a question you might want to still answer. He should read my next witness. I've got a call back on the track. Any other issue you raised about the sofa?
Roger, in terms of excavation, how do you handle the soil that is historic soil that needs to be excavated for the drainage of the foundations?
Yeah, that has to be sampled, classified and discharged, yeah, disposed offsite properly. Absolutely.
Any other board members have questions with this witness? Anybody in the public have questions for this witness?
Yes, sir, you said that, actually, the CME representative for town, when he touched on it, said there were environmental concerns, there was no NFA letter yet. Is there a NFA letter or is this a paper?
No, the NFA letter is left when the LSRP program began. So it had no NFA letter, there will be no NFA letter for the site. What there will be is a response action outcome statement that I'll write, that's the RAL. That's the, that takes the place of a no further action.
And the New Jersey DEP, did I oversay you? Do you have to report to them? You got to report?
We have to issue reports to them, that's right.
Do they have any input on, do they actually, or they just take your word?
It's a complex question. If you stick with the regulations and as I mentioned before, have no variances to the technical regulations, then I can guide the remediation. We have to issue them reports. They have an opportunity to come back and talk, but that's, they still leave it up to the LSRP to guide the direction of the program. That's the way, that's the Site Remediation Reform Act. That's what it was enabled, is speedier cleanup of these properties, and that's why they let us take the position of the regulator when it comes to making decisions on cleanup. I will say one more thing. In order to get closure of the site, to get this RAL that we're talking about, response action outcome, there will be permits required, okay? Those permits are issued by the DEP. So in order to get to that eventual closure of the site, the DEP will be able to weigh in because they can either give you the permit or they can't. So it's up to them to cooperate with the LSRP to get the permit so we can effect closure of the site.
How about the EPA, the federal?
No, they don't have any jurisdiction on this particular site.
They're not involved with this.
No, absolutely not.
Site whatsoever. And it's, back to something that New York's, one of the members questioned about the raining water in the green area, that I thought you said that the whole area is going to be asphalt.
No, the green area is, that I was describing is an area that's mostly landscape now, so that's not changing. What I was saying is, I don't know where exactly you were pointing, and maybe I was interpreting it wrong, but we were talking about this area petroleum impacted water. Where that sits, it's all pavement above it now. And as I understand the development plan, it's sitting here in front of us, that area is going to be paved in the future as well, so that's not going to change.
You used some technical terms about probably the historic fill, all kind of, the word that the public knows is, is, are you sure we're going to cap?
It's a buffer, it's a buffer and a barrier system. So there's a barrier on top, could be landscaping, could be concrete, could be asphalt, could be foundation of a building, and then there's a buffer, which is clean fill. And then below the buffer, they actually tuck in what they call a demarcation layer, so that if anybody digs in the future, unknowledgeable to the LSRP, because we wouldn't do that, they'll encounter this barrier material and know that they're now approaching on the historic fill. So that's, that's the system of, that's the general system of barrier bucket.
Would the general public with some knowledge of that, would they, would that be referred to as capping?
I've heard a call of that before, yes.
And the other thing that's paved and waved, are you familiar with that term?
No, I've not heard that.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any written information?
Get your state name, please, for the record.
David, any, do you have any written information for, for the board and the audience about what concentrations were found there of the various toxic metals and other things?
I don't, not with me today. Can I say, the document that we issued that has all that information is available to you. It's at the DEP's office, it's public document.
Now, from what I'm gathering, the DEP won't be coming to supervise anything here.
They can inspect any type they want, but I don't know.
If they want.
If they want to.
But basically, I've heard the DEP mentioned several times by, particularly the chairman, but the DEP isn't necessarily going to be coming. You're, you're the site manager.
Yeah, there were, with a couple of exceptions there. One, in order to get closure of the site, to get that response action outcome statement, we need permits, okay? Those permits require submission to the DEP, and they have to review the entire site. And at that point, they can issue, which we're hopeful they do, the permit for both the soil issues and the groundwater issues. So it's not entirely accurate that they're not involved at that spot where the permits require they are.
So 90 boreings were done, how, and some of them as deep as 60 feet or a few?
Yeah, yeah, a couple, very few went there.
Is the contamination, all the toxins all the way down?
Absolutely not.
How far?
The historic fill is about six feet deep on the site, so that's the extent of the historic fill impacts. The soil, as I mentioned, we've already removed the soils that had to be removed that exceed standards that aren't associated with the historic fill. Those soils are gone. So, yeah, six feet.
So when the project is done, and a lot of the existing pavement will have to be removed?
In order to affect the development plan, as you see here, a large portion of the existing pavement, pavement will have to be removed.
And that's going to expose all of the toxic soil. The historic. Gathering six feet deep.
Well, the historic fill will likely be encountered when they do site work and construction, absolutely.
So won't that be a hazard to the construction workers themselves?
Well, properly mitigated through site controls, through personal protective equipment, through plans that have to be written in advance of them doing that work, we're going to mitigate any impacts to the workers.
So when they have the heavy machinery going in there to do some of the work, isn't some of that dirt going to be flying up in the air and flowing around in the air where these residents live?
And that's, that's part of, that's a great question. That's part of the, there's a soil management plan that is part of the remedial, I'm not going to lose you there, that's soil, I know. There's a soil management plan that's inserted as part of the remedial action work plan. That's the document that I mentioned had to go in 60 days before the actual work can begin, okay? So that soil management plan is meant to address issues that you're describing here. Dust, whatever, though, any tracking, you know, material on and off site, all that would be mitigated by that plan.
You mentioned the development plan. You said, once the development plan is approved, hasn't the board already approved a development plan? A redevelopment, they've already approved one, right?
Well, they approved the plan, the redevelopment plan, but this is the application based on that redevelopment plan. So this is a site plan application, we're looking for site plan. I may not use. You mean approval of the application, how about that? Is that a little?
So it's a new development.
I thought you said it's a new application. Can you name some of the pollutants, cigarettes, soil there?
Sure. There's in historic fill, okay? There's circum metals, there's copper, there's zinc, there's nickel. Those come to mind, I can't name all of them, but those.
How about arsen?
Uh, yeah, there's probably some arsen.
And lead?
I imagine that there's some lead.
Mercury?
I'm not sure about that.
Phallium?
Yeah. Heavy metals have a range of concentrations that are even allowed for pure residential development in contact. So having just some of those compounds in the soil doesn't necessarily mean that it's a hazard. So when I'm citing that there's some metals there, I'm not saying to you that every one of those exceeds the standards. So there are metals there, that's, that's for sure.
Okay, I think that's a, I wanted to ask you, except the, you have grassy areas and where all the trees are going to be. How is there, how are you going to have a tree growing for grass, grassy areas and not have some of the toxins escaping from those particular locations?
Yeah, the DEP, as I mentioned, in the way that they fashion the regulations to account for this kind of development over historic fill, it's very prescribed, they're called presumptive remedies. They've got, they've gone so far as to identify the actual separation around a root ball for a tree, how much clean fill needs to be all the way around the root ball in order for it to be allowed. So that's how, that's how landscaping can happen and there not be any connection between the public and the historic fill. It's down to that level that the regulations specify, that barrier and buffer system.
So you've done, right now you're working on 12?
I've got 12 active cases right now.
And they're all, what, like this polluted?
Oh, there are a variety of things, but yeah, every one of them has its, is a case meaning that there's environmental impact.
And you've done many, hundreds?
Oh, probably, yeah.
And this is New Jersey?
Yeah.
So all of, this is a major problem in New Jersey. So all of, this is a major problem in New Jersey.
I do work all over the place. So I don't know that New Jersey and the sites that I look at, I can really sit and say right here as I stand that it's the worst, all right? They certainly have their impacts. I've got similarly impacted properties that I deal with in Connecticut, in New York, in Vermont. Think about Vermont, that's not a place to gravitate to and think that it's...
But New Jersey's like the most polluted state in the country.
I can't speak to that, no.
That's all I can think of.
Good evening again, Michael Sheldon, Forty Seventh Fleet Street. Mr. Gendron, you have mentioned a few times that the historical fill on the site typically is about six feet vertically.
In that range.
Right. When this case first came before the planning board, you know, a year or so ago, and there were just discussions about declaring it an area of redevelopment, it was mentioned that the total extent of the contamination on the site occupied a square area of about ten acres. Now, if you're, if you're, it sounds like you're going to need to remove six feet of soil over an area of ten square acres. And if you do the quick calculation, that turns out to be about three million cubic feet of dirt, or about a hundred thousand cubic yards. Now, typical commercial dump truck, it carries a capacity of about fourteen cubic feet. You're looking at...
Mr. Sheldon, he never testified he had to remove that dirt.
He said, he had, he said that there are areas where the historical fill would need to be removed, about six, six feet.
I didn't say that, definitely not.
So you're not going, you're going to...
No.
You're going to cap that?
We're putting in a buffer and a barrier system over the historic fill. That's what I said.
So that would be, essentially is a concrete barrier that would be...
No.
At grade?
It's not concrete. In some places it's concrete because it's a foundation. In other areas it's landscaping, okay? In other areas it's pavement. So it's a variety of measures that constitute the engineering controls, which the DEP mandates for sites just like this.
I guess I have to defer to your expertise, but the type of other barriers that you're suggesting just don't, unless it would be concrete, I don't see how that would be a permanent obstacle for some of these toxins and carcinogens to eventually leach their way out of the ground. It sounds like you're just going to put different types of sand and plastics to try to contain these very serious pollutants and these toxins.
Let me see if I can answer it this way. So after the barrier system and the buffer system are installed, whether it's concrete or whether it's pavement or pavers or landscaping, there's going to be maintenance of those features that are going to be required. I keep bringing up this permit. Permits that'll be required, that the DEP will have a hand in writing, in fact, they write them, mandate operation and maintenance of these engineering controls. That's how you mitigate. So if somebody, if you're out there, you inspect the pavement, let's say annually, any issues crop up, you fix cracks, you repair pavement, you repair pavement, and do whatever it takes to make sure that that engineering control continues to operate the way it was intended.
I'm glad you mentioned maintenance, but I'm going to address that in a second. Would you say that the best type of barrier without having any future risks, the best possible barrier would be a concrete cap compared to different types of fill or plastic barriers?
No, absolutely not.
Concrete is not the best type of barrier?
No, no. For instance, concrete doesn't wear well for drive aisles. It depends on site use. I mean, there's certain areas of the site where that will work fine. In fact, you know, foundations of buildings would be better out of concrete than out of pavement. But areas where there's parking, you're going to be adjusting, you'll want to do utility work down the road. It's much easier to deal with going through some pavement than it is through some concrete.
Perhaps Mr. Gashin will object that I'm giving testimony rather than asking questions, but it turns out that there are a number of academic journals dealing with this type of engineering problem. And I came across an article from a journal called Remediation. It's entitled Hazardous Chemical Site...
Why don't we swear you in if you're going to give this?
Sure, if I could just, I wanted to just read one little relevant thing into the record if you don't mind.
This is a question, just...
Well, if it has a bearing on what Mr. Gendron just said about these types of barriers, I just think this is important for everyone to hear. If I could just give you a brief section of this in the record, I would appreciate it.
Mr. Sheldon, I'm going to object for being a section in the record for something.
Well, I'll submit it into evidence, I'll give this to the chairman.
Well, at the end you would be able to do it, so to save time, why don't we swear you in on this? Because it is not a question. And I understand counsel's objection, which is correct, but to save time, we'll let you do this.
My objection, if I may, my other objection is, on what basis upon which do we take this kind of information? How do we know it's valid information?
This is true.
I've qualified my LSRP very carefully, qualified to talk about this. We don't know where this is coming from.
I'll instruct the board to give whatever weight it needs. Remember, my position on this, my position on this is that this is background material for the board since we do not have jurisdiction. And we'll consider this paragraph that you're reading as more background information.
You swear to the whole truth and all the evidence you've got?
So this is a journal that calls remediation. The title of it is hazardous chemical site remediations with cap and problems with long-term protection. I just want to read two little sections of it. Those familiar with landfill caps know that they are at best only postponed when future groundwater pollution will occur by eligible waste constituents in contaminated soils or waste management units that are capped as part of the site remediation. While in-place capping of waste in contaminated areas is certainly one of the least expensive short-term approaches for hazardous chemical site landfill remediation that carries with potentially significant long-term issues that must, that should, must be addressed in developing a properly remediated site. In the last part of the paragraph. One of the most significant problems associated with onsite waste or contaminated soil management using capping as a remediation approach is that funds for maintenance, this is why it was, Mr. Gendron brought it, maintenance, funds for maintenance of the cap are only assured for thirty years. The magnitude of the thirty-year post-closure funding is typically not adequate to replace the cap should deterioration proceed at a rate faster than expected. While in virtually all waste management units, the waste will be a threat for far beyond thirty years, there is no assurance that funds will be available to continue to maintain the cap, monitor the groundwaters, and provide for remediation of polluted groundwaters when the pollution occurs. In most situations, the waste will be a threat effectively forever. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. You're more than happy to have this, I'll give this as part of the record.
Obviously, I can.
Well, now would not be the right time to do that. When you get up and sum up, you can consider that.
Any other questions, Mr. Paul?
I'd like to follow up on that. My witness, Shannon Spahn, yeah. What was the question? I'm just trying to make sure...
Well, you said that, you would mention that you would, there would be a maintenance program to make sure that these barriers and buffers would be maintained. But as this article points out, that most projects only have a short-term facility to guarantee maintenance, that after, after a decade, in some cases, three decades, the developer and whatever walk away and the site is allowed to fare on its own. And that's when all the fun begins. That's when all the contamination that's been harbored for two or three decades now is released.
What was your question?
I think his question was, after thirty years, there's still going to be money to maintain it. Right, Mr. Sheldon?
I would like assurance that they have a commitment for perpetuity as long as they're, they're, well, I know this sounds...
That's a hierarchical standard, landfill. This is a landfill.
Well, it's a barrier, barriers by their nature will fail. And whatever barriers they're planning, they're not going to last forever. At some point in time, maybe not in our lifetimes, but our kids' or our grandkids' lifetime, these barriers will fail.
Mr. Sheldon, I object a second. You may have a point, but I follow as a chemist. We would build nowhere, we'll knock everybody's house down, and we'll remediate the soil underneath our homes. We'll raid on gases. I'm sure if I dump, I live on the routine estates, that farmer may have dumped his motor oil under my home base. We're never going to remove all the contaminants that are in New Jersey's land. So if we're going to follow the guidelines of the DEP and we have assurance that the developer's going to do the right things within those guidelines, we can stay here till midnight debating this. There's no assurance he could give, there's no assurances thirty, forty, fifty years down the road for anything. He could say it.
I wouldn't say it, trust me.
To me, I listen, in my opinion, as a board member, when I look at things that are contaminated, and I've done a little work around the contaminated sites, you have to take the law as it's written and have some, you know, faith in the government's control of these dangerous substances. He's already commented that these substances aren't even at a level where they are contaminated. They're a brownfield at best, at some point. Listen, I've worked and lived there for forty years. I'm sure I've handled toxic stuff without knowing it. I'm fine. And so if we're going to take that approach, the approach that can extreme, extreme approach, we will build nothing anywhere. And then don't complain when the town looks like it does, because we just won't build anywhere. Every, Bellville's an industrial town, I hear it all the time. So that means we can't build anything anywhere.
I just want it to be understood, I'm not opposed to development. Bellville certainly needs it, but I just don't want what seems to many of us to be a vantage being put on a very seriously contaminated site.
That's not true, it's not seriously contaminated. He already testified that they took out the most dangerous chemicals some years back. And many years back, Cooper Industries took out tons and, tons and tons of dirt on the other site of what was that property, on our street.
But the historic fill still contains all sorts of very serious metals, metalites.
The developer has to follow state regulations and standards. And we don't have any faith in that, then we're never going to move forward.
So would you comment on the, I thought the principal question was whether or not there is a deterioration of the barriers? You could address that.
Yeah, I mean, there's, and this goes back to the O and M, there's natural deterioration, there's drive aisle wear that happens. And all those things under the plant, the operation, maintenance, and monitoring plan, which is incorporated into the permit, which lives on forever, the permit does, those requirements will never leave. So there's always going to be inspections of the pavement, inspections of the concrete, inspections of the site, and any repairs that are necessary are going to be required to be made. One thing I'll point out, if the basis of that article there is on landfill, it sounded like that's maybe the source of some of the information there, this is not a landfill. Landfills are characteristically organic issues. Over time, with caps, degradation happens, volatilization happens, leachate gets developed. That's not what happens with historic fill.
I don't know if you're familiar with the history of the site, but there was a lake there. It was during the history of the Edison battery plant, that Silver Lake got filled in by all of his waste materials. So this is a landfill.
We can find it, so, and we put in two hundred some odd investigation locations.
There was a lake there, it's well documented. If you have access to Dr. George Hill's book...
I checked it out.
The witnesses testified, tested, and didn't find that.
I think we have enough background information.
Jeff Maddigan, Fifty Six Walnut Street, Bellville. I have a copy here of the information on file with DEP on this property from the preliminary investigation from those monitoring wells and ground samples. Iron, aluminum, mercury, arsenic, lead, manganese, nickel, sodium, beryllium, beryllium, I'm sorry, thallium, up to a hundred and fifty times the amount of allowable amounts in groundwater and earth in this area. The historic use of this property was of a magnitude...
Again.
No, I'm asking a question, excuse me, excuse me. Please don't interrupt me regularly and...
Well, you testified.
You tend to harass people asking questions.
Don't harass me.
No. What, you tell me, please, what the historic use of this property as known by you in your investigation, you know, dating back to the term of the last century, and I don't mean two thousand, nineteen hundred, what was the historic use of this property?
Yeah, and I testified to that, that it was battery operation, battery manufacturing operations.
In chemical works?
Yeah, associated with battery manufacturing.
No, in chemical...
Okay.
Yeah, no, I'm just surprised, only because the professional that the board, you know, hired to report also neglected to mention the historic use and the record that was on record with the DEP of this property, this subject property. So the historic use was the battery manufacturing and chemical works of the Edison Corporation.
Yeah, I'm familiar with the operations, and the operations did not end on this property. They extended to other properties as well. So when you talk about operations at the battery, or the battery or chemical working operations, it was a mixture on both properties. So it's hard to say exactly what happened on this piece of the property. What I can say is, with all the investigation locations that we put in there, hundreds of samples that we collected, we could not link any of the impacts that we found to anything with the metals that you just described there, NPAGs and things, to anything but the historic fill. There were no hotspots. We put borings exactly where some of the old buildings were.
But you're also talking about groundwater.
All I'm talking about is soil and groundwater.
Right, but if we're talking about historic pollution, this goes far and beyond potentially any fill. If the pollution was generated on the property and then the water table, which we are very close to, as you have pointed out, it is not high above the water table, and it was a lake, Silver Lake, this was it. And the Edison plant and manufacturing chemical company.
Again, here we go.
This is nothing but testimony.
It is the history of the use of property, and I'm getting to the point of, is this appropriate for capping? Or should this be completely considered as remediation only and perhaps no residential be allowed on property that has a magnitude of carcinogens and water contamination that, you know, when you're talking about buffers and barriers, potentially, you know, shrubs, you're talking about, you know, history of, this is historic pollution that it really is just unbelievable.
Can we get a question?
Well, I just did. Is this appropriate to put residential on this property with barriers of...
Let me answer your question.
Will you please let me, yeah, well, if you would be quiet, would you get to the point?
Now, let's be civil here, please.
Well, I mean, I think it's harassment.
It's not harassment. Let him answer your question. Do you think the site could be built on?
Absolutely.
With your two hundred and fifty sample, how many, how many borings did you say you took?
Sixty borings, eighty borings, somewhere in that range.
And out of those eighty borings, have we found hotspots or high levels of contamination other than historic fill?
It's ubiquitous, and that's part of what I'm hearing, and that is exactly the way it's characterized at the site there. The site wide, the historic fill is very obvious if you look at the borings there, bricks, cinders, glass shards, everything that you would expect in historic fill.
I'm extremely concerned with the water pollution.
And we've got a whole network of monitoring wells out there, so...
Right, but what is that? I mean, you're speaking a lot to the borings, and when you're talking about crushed debris that was used as landfill, that is not, you know, that isn't making my point, which is the pollution, it rises and lowers with groundwater, right, rising and lowering, diffuses, like you said, it does diffuse, but it also remains there. And that, you know, when you're...
Is there a question, Mr. Maddigan?
Yes.
Would you ask?
Please stop harassing me and let me ask. Am I wasting your time?
Did you testify?
You have to excuse me if you think this is a...
Waste all your time asking a question.
I am asking a question.
What you're doing is testifying.
Let your expert answer, Mr. Maddigan.
There are impacts, as I mentioned, to, from chlorinated solvents, we're monitoring those and we're managing those. There are impacts from petroleum soils that have now been removed and we're monitoring them and we're managing them. There are also impacts related to historic fill. The way the state of New Jersey allows those to be managed is through institutional controls. It's making sure that that site is never intersected with a drinking water well or somebody can access it.
No one's going to drink the water, of course.
That's perfect, and it makes my job a lot easier when that's the case, but...
But then if that water were to raise up toxins and we get close to ground level and you're talking about having shrubs and things of that nature as a barrier...
It's not that shallow. The groundwater table doesn't rise to that level.
Well, it does on occasion. I mean, I, you know, I'm, my house is in Bellville. I'm six feet down in the ground. Sometimes the water...
Mr. Maddigan, is there a question?
The water table rises very high on occasion.
Is there a question?
There is.
What is the question?
Do you think that those barriers would be suitable if these things were to percolate up to a level where they could become airborne? Those historic...
Yeah, and that's, what you brought up is a good point.
Well, thank you. Did you hear that?
Did you want to answer the question?
Please.
So, so when you mention airborne, the kinds of chemicals you... So, so when you mention airborne, the kinds of chemicals you described there, the heavy metals, which are what you described, pHs, those are not volatile compounds. Those are not ones that.
Arsenic?
No, that either. That is not a volatile compound. It tends to stay absorptive to the soil matrix. So that's not an issue, all of those.
Can he answer the question without you interrupting him? Who steps up, sir?
So, issues of airborne, that's not, that's not the issue we're addressing by the remedy here. That's not a concern.
So you feel that this is appropriate to encapsulate that pollution and not have it a hazard to those who could potentially live on a former industrial site, Mr. Gascoigne?
I do believe so, and we're following, just, you know, the exact requirements, the regulations for this exact situation. So by following regulations, which are designed to be protective of public health and the environment, I am convinced that this is the right remedy.
Is there one more question? Because our reporter needs a break, otherwise we'll get back.
Well, it's a follow-up. You're gonna be on-site supervising the remediation?
As LSRP, I'm responsible for supervision. So I may not be on-site all the time, but there'll be eyes and ears will be out there to observe and make sure that the work is done in accordance with the plan.
So would you admit that this is not gonna be a cleanup?
Admit.
This is only encapsulation. That's what you have planned. You're not taking out the six feet of contaminated soil? You're just gonna put something on top, a barrier on top?
This is in the definition of the work that we're doing. This is remediation. That's what this is.
So back in nineteen eighty, when they paved over the whole area, no cleanup was done. They just put paper there. So then now, all these years later, it was almost thirty years later, here we are looking at another development on the location, and we're just gonna encapsulate it again, leaving the contaminants, the toxins there.
They took out three, over three hundred yards of material.
Yeah, I mean. And what I've done.
If you took it all out, it would be three million cubic feet.
That wouldn't make sense, would it? That wouldn't make sense, would it?
Maybe part of the reason why the DEP develops regulations.
It would be a final solution to finally get that stuff out.
You know, down the street, there's another law. It could be someone's backyard, that's leaching the same thing out. This is the point that I'm trying to make. We could spend weeks here going over this. If the state allows it, and they're gonna, you know, comply with the state laws, we're just beating a dead horse. We could just keep going over this. The state will not allow housing to be built on contaminated soil. And if they do, you should go down the trench and take it up with your.
The DEP used to have people that were sent out to sites, and Christie did away with that.
Yeah, because we need to develop.
So now they're allowing these paid professionals, but paid by the developers to say everything is A-OK, and you're buying into it.
It's not the issue before the planning board. It's not. It's not a contaminated site.
It's not a concern, right?
Listen, it could be in our backyards, how would we know? Did anybody ever soil sample your home?
You've worked in your contaminated sites, and look at you, right?
Right, I'm perfectly.
You got a blood test?
Listen.
All right, if there's no further questions in the public at this time. We're gonna give our.
We could still ask questions after the break, right?
Not at this, we wanna finish up this witness and give her a stenographer a break.
So when I asked you, you said that you'll be the DEP agent, but will not come off the stretch.
They may. I can't say that they will or they won't. That's, they run their own schedules.
Well, Mr. Condon, just once you say that, DEP ain't coming out here.
Who cares if they do? Who says that your trip from track is any better than this man?
I'll answer your testimony on that.
That's not what he said. He said, he doesn't know.
He would do that.
Well, look, when testimony like this, I just wanna tell you.
I understand, I'm paying attention.
Just for the record, in case it doesn't go to court, you're creating yourself a conflict event.
I'm not creating any conflict in anything.
We have no further questions. I just wanted to take a short five-minute break for our first tonight.
Brian Fleish from one thirty-two Franklin Institute. So, in your professional opinion, you are looking at in-site remediation as opposed to ex-site remediation for this property?
Um, not exactly. There's a couple areas of groundwater impacts, okay, that are still being managed. The final plans for them are not one-hundred percent complete at this point. All right, so I wouldn't say that that's the final remedy. We're hopeful that natural attenuation will do a job on that. We take the problem from the hill. The rest of this is, you know, ex-stitute, institute, there's, that isn't the way that I use the terminology. In situ remediation for organic compounds, typically there's amendments you add, and it biodegrades, and that's how the remediation is effective. So I'm not a hundred percent connected. I think you understand what we're doing there. It sounds like you do anyway, so.
My question to you, you've been doing this even before the LSRP program.
Oh, way before, yeah.
Okay. To your knowledge, has there ever been a failure of a capping system or buffer barrier system that could be taken speed up?
I don't have any sites where that's happened. As I said, they all come with maintenance plans, so we do have to do maintenance. Some sites have fences that are part of that engineering control, some have pavements, and we have to go back in and actually seal some of the pavement, some of the, so there's a variety of O and M activities that are put in place to make sure that they don't fail, don't have a catastrophic failure.
You said that about three hundred cubic yards, was it? Tons were removed. Do you know when that might have happened?
Um, two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen, across those two years. And the plans that describe that ad nauseam, the remedial action reports, are filed with the DEP, so they're already in the public domain.
Are you familiar with the Edward Quantum remediation ad hangwell?
No, no.
I guess my final question, it's my final question, I promise. With the contaminants, they're there now, arsenic, lead, that sort of thing. Do you feel that keeping that historical fill as safe as the chemical going to break down, turn it to gas, go through the barrier, is there any danger of that?
No, these compounds are terribly stable, okay? And that's part of the nature of historic fill, and that's why the DEP has allowed them to be managed safely. That's what the rules are required to do, is provide a safe remedy, and that's what we're following. So because these things are pervasive, they're gonna be there perpetuity.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Gascoigne, you have another witness.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I have a question. Thank you. Mary Higgins, one forty-eight, right now. This is gonna seem a rather simplistic question with that old chemical rhetoric, but one of the common ways to assess the toxicity of the soil is to test colonies of earthworms that burrow down below the frost line. They can go further than six feet down to test if the soil is viable, for example, for growing shrubs, trees, all those plants there. Was that done?
No.
Why not?
Uh, we're not required to do that? And with regard to the shrubbery and that, that's gonna be built in the buffer and barrier system, so it's gonna be above the historic fill?
Oh, just out of curiosity, this is what I asked it. I guess you're familiar with the American Legion, of course, the street from there, the American Legion Hall?
Okay.
Because next to the American Legion Hall, I believe the town owns a lot there. And if you go by there, Belmont Avenue, you're familiar with Belmont Avenue, right? There's always weeds growing there, and the American Legion complains to the town. The town's really good about going and taking the weeds and the saplings out, and they clean it up. Now, when you go into that parking lot, what do you see? Do you see any weeds growing, any healthy weeds there? Nope, any saplings? There's nothing growing there on the dirt. There's maybe some ground scrub grass. And the reason I ask this question about the earthworms is that you expect people to live there, but earthworms can't. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sack.
Would you like to answer that question?
Well, the plan is residential, so, but, yeah, we expect there to be some people there.
We have no further questions of the public from this witness, Mr. Gascoigne.
She's very good.
Please, raise your hand, so we can see if they're true, if they're not true, then we'll go to the next one. If they state your name and title, you're in.
Sure, there's Craig Perrigo, D E P, R E G O.
Mr. Perrigo, what's your application?
Civil engineer with practicing as a traffic.
And where do you maintain your practice?
Business address at two forty-five Main Street, Chester Road.
And how long practicing in the field of traffic engineering?
I've been doing this for eighteen years.
From what school did you graduate, what degree did you obtain?
A bachelor's degree in civil engineering and a junior doctorate.
Are you a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey?
I am.
Just briefly give a word of benefit for some of your experience in traffic and parking plans.
Sure, I've been doing, working as a traffic engineer for eighteen years. I've appeared on hundreds of occasions, had experience in the traffic department, said in Georgia. I think you're involved with many years ago, but I do this pretty much every day.
Are you a member of any societies, professional groups, connected to your work?
Yes, Institute of Transportation Engineers.
And you say you've done this almost every night?
Yeah.
You'd accept it as an expert in the field of traffic and parking?
We'll accept your, we'll assess an expert. Thank you.
Mr. Perrigo, would you review the existing conditions?
Sure, I think by now the board's familiar with the site location. We've been discussing this for a while now. Belmont Avenue between Franklin Street and Bloomfield Avenue. We sort of focused our analysis on those two signalized intersections and both ends of Belmont Avenue. And what we've done is take traffic counts at those locations, looking at the weekday morning, the weekday evening peak hours. That's when you're gonna see the roadway has its highest traffic volumes, and when the site generates its highest traffic volume as well. So it kind of gives us a worst case scenario. So we took counts of those two intersections between seven and nine on a weekday morning, and between four-thirty and six-thirty. And we isolate within those two, two-hour windows the single busiest hour, the morning peak hour and the evening peak hour that we're taking a look at. At this location, the morning peak hour happened to occur at seven forty-five to eight forty-five in the morning, and the evening was five PM to six PM. And what we found was Belmont Avenue has a two-way traffic volume of about three hundred vehicles per hour in the morning and five hundred in the evening. That compares to Bloomfield Avenue, which is about fifteen hundred vehicles per hour. Franklin Street's about twelve hundred vehicles per hour in the evening, so Belmont Street's got the lower volumes, obviously, of the two main roads. But I think it suffers a little bit from that, those two intersections, because Bloomfield and Franklin, the majority of the green time, they've gone off with much less, much less green time because of those lower volumes. And that's sort of what we observed in the field, and in order to substantiate that, we prepared capacity in the L C's. We basically make a model of the roadway network based on the traffic lines that we counted, the number of lanes, traffic signal timing, and it's input into a computer software that gives us the average delay per vehicle at those locations, which is then ranges of those delays are related to a level of service. A being the best level of service, F being the worst for a failing condition. And in this case, those Belmont Avenue approaches to both of those signals, this is in the level of service D or E range. Again, it's not necessarily because there's so much volume, as you said, about one-third of the volume on that road is a deluge. It's really a function of that traffic signal timing. Some kind of roads get a lot more than green time. That sort of summarizes the existing conditions, obviously, of the existing site conditions. It's still on the ground for, you know, a lot of the potential, but it was on site today. That's the existing off-site traffic conditions.
Do you have some additional information about the streets like Belmont Avenue? Do they make a further work on it?
As far as existing conditions, I think I've.
Okay, then would you discuss the future conditions?
Sure. First thing we need to do is sort of build up the baseline of what we counted in terms of our traffic counts to what we'd be like in the future. And the Jersey DOT publishes a two percent growth rate for roadways in this area, so if you apply that growth rate, over, apply this case over a period of three years to what I count for our traffic counts, what's the volume in the future, other areas of development potentially that could occur. The next step is to figure out how much traffic the development proposes to manage at a rate. We do that with the Institute of Transportation Engineers, I T D, have a publication called Trip Generation, which gives us, it's a compilation essentially of traffic count statement at various end uses and out functions. We'll use that data to project this, for this particular volume to generate based on the size of the commercial space and the number of residential units. And that gives a baseline of traffic volumes expected at those uses in standalone site, basically in the middle of, middle of suburbia. Here, obviously, there's some factors that come into play that are meant to alter those I T D numbers. First thing, the most obvious is the mass transit, the ends of building, this residential portion of this development is obviously, there's going to be traffic jams, and more than use the light rail, and use that mass transit, so that's gonna replace some of those vehicular trips. The second aspect is an internal interaction. You have commercial space on the site that presumably the residential tenants will be using, obviously, the grocery store is next to them, and then they will walk to the grocery store. So that's gonna have some internal trips that, whereas a resident did wheel in this site, that would drive into the grocery store here, the right way. Same thing with the commercial spaces, depending on what they turn out to be. And the last kind of phenomenon that we have to take into account is what's called pass-by traffic. You have commercial space, particularly in a somewhat congested area like this part of the state is, a lot of the traffic that's generated by it is pulled in from the existing travel street, and they're already driving on the roadway, and stopping to buy a bill or coffee, if there's a coffee shop, wherever it happens to be. So they're not really impacting the adjacent intersections, they're just coming in and out of the driveway, because they'd already, already would have been the roadway anyway. So, based on the New Jersey transit data and I T D data, I can take into account all those factors, the mass transit, internal trips, and the pass-by traffic, and come up with a picture of what traffic generation would look like for this site in particular, based on the site, based on its location and the P L uses that were on site. And then I'm able to take that volume, transpose it onto those roam volumes that I counted, that two percent growth rate for three years, and reanalyze those intersections, considering both with and without our proposed development. One, without, we consider it, call it the no-build condition, with is the build condition. I rerun that simulation model again, check the levels of service again, compare the two, and in this case, between the no-build and build conditions, there's no change in the levels of service, we're still in that D to B range. There's an increase in the delay slightly, but not to the point where it changes that level of service. So there's enough capacity out there to handle this additional traffic without creating undue noticeable increase in delay, in terms of future conditions.
You want to get any specific accounts regarding what we're prepared?
I can, just so you know, the trip generation numbers I'm referring to, a trip is to be applied to a regular exit. Based on the projections that I mentioned before, we have a total of sixty-nine trips in the morning peak hour, a hundred and thirty-seven in the evening peak hour. Add on top of that, as I said, three hundred to five hundred on Belmont, and fifteen hundred to twelve hundred on the field and Franklin Street.
And you've indicated the level of service is still good on all these intersections?
The level of service is acceptable, it's in a lower range, and in the busiest time period, the peak hour, obviously, there's some congestion of what happened in this development is, is not, the gate works, and I can increase to the point where it changes the level of service at any of the intersections. All right, I should mention, we've got site travelers, we've been saying analysis for the proposed site travelers, and they all operate at the levels of service.
Would you read, you find your pick of routes?
Sure, I mean, from a traffic impact perspective, and looking at it strictly as a traffic engineer, this is the perfect technology for the site, it's very useful to say, if you want to put residential near mass transit, obviously, it's a good plan, and in a sense, from a traffic perspective, it reduces vehicle trips. And often when I do these multi-family developments near train stations, everybody's, well, everybody still has to go to the grocery store, so they're still gonna be driving. Well, here, this particular location, we have a supermarket in the site, and two other retailers, which is, that are obviously going to be tailored towards what the residents like. So from a traffic perspective, this is ideal in this location. It's not gonna necessarily bring in too much new people from foreign lives, it's gonna take them to the existing credit station, the existing location.
I think there were some questions we need to board on, which are interested citizens about the New Jersey infrastructure condition, would you answer that?
Sure. Sure. We have, uh, I'll start from, uh, left to right on the plan. This is exhibit eighty-three, uh, which is Brandon said. The, the existing driveway behind the supermarket that's going to serve the, uh, truck circulation will reduce for the supermarket primarily. Uh, the second access point is along the front drive aisle of the, of the supermarket primarily, obviously going to serve, uh, people destined to this retail building. The next driveway, uh, would be a combination of, I suppose, the, the retail and the, uh, ground floor of the, the L-shaped building, the residential portion of it. Then you have a, a fourth driveway that would likely be, uh, certain both, both, uh, ground floor commercial spaces in both of the residential buildings and obviously this last driveway is, uh, for P S E G access involved, uh, for the parking for the residential building primarily to be residence. So you have, there's good dispersion of traffic out into Belmont, you're not concentrating it out in any one location, which I think works well. And then you have dispersion of that traffic volume that I mentioned before, where you left the blood to the two intersections. So you're not really concentrating the traffic in the back of any one location.
Uh, I have no further questions, Mr. Williams.
Any board members? Just from your statements, you feel that even building this building as, as proposed would not have a negative impact or drop the level of service on Belmont Avenue?
It won't drop the level, it won't have a negative impact, actually it drops the level of service. Obviously, there's going to be more traffic, it's not going to fix the existing problem, but it's not going to make the emergency worse.
Okay.
Is there anything you can suggest to, to enhance the, uh, flow of traffic at that intersection?
And like I said, it's really a function of how much green time needs to be provided to the major environments, like if it's, if there's a couple of common rules. I mean, sure, if you run the Belmont Avenue, if you back Bloomfield Avenue, like, we're not really happy.
The traffic light is tied up with, with the light rail, so I mean, no, that can't be, uh, can't be touched.
And the good thing is, it's one block, it's a finite amount of developing, like in a third area, so in this case, we got an ability to put this in about the traffic levels of service.
Are there any restrictions on turns left to rights, either way?
There, there don't need to be. The site visibility is good and I prefer to be able to disperse the traffic into the two intersections.
There's no street parking along that, uh, is there street parking along Belmont Avenue? The sites are good.
Any other, uh, members have a question for his witness?
Sure.
If not, we'll ask the public. Do you have any questions? Any witnesses? Mr. Fleishman?
Hello, a question on thirty-two Franklin Street. Have your studies, uh, brought into consideration the fire department? Because eventually that fire department will be reopening out Franklin. Have the, right, councilman?
Yes, it will be.
Yeah. Uh, have you brought that into, like, when the truck comes out? You know, because no one has any control, obviously, when the fire department's going to have to come in and out. But have you brought that into your considerations? Because you're saying you've, you know, looked at the traffic, you've looked at cars, you've looked at the subway, but did you remember to bring the fire department and bringing the, the trucks going down Belmont?
Well, the fire department, I did add that growth rates, take into account things like that, small ones. Fire departments have been generating substantial traffic volumes. Obviously, at the times when there's an emergency, that's a disruption, but that's going to happen whether or not this project's here or not. And those sorts of things happen all the time, and you can't take into account if there was a car accident, a meteor fallen, or, and I was saying, in the typical daily conditions, the fire department is not going to be a typical daily occurrence, but when it does, it will have certain impact as it do with the rest of this part.
Okay.
Mr. Fleishman brings up a good point about the, the firehouse. I mean, I don't think Belmont Avenue's got affected or blocked Franklin Street. Maybe Mr. Kennedy, when you put a, a fire department reopens, maybe you guys could put a light there, so that when people are backed up from the intersection, they don't stop in front of the, the firehouse.
I'll bring it up to Johnson.
Thank you.
Where does he say the fire department?
Yeah, so you don't block the, uh, driveway of the firehouse. Mr. Fleishman?
Uh, Frank Fleishman, one thirty-two Franklin Street. So you did a study of Belmont Avenue, beginning at Bloomfield Avenue, and determined us of the intersection of Franklin Street and Belmont, correct?
Yeah, we focused on those two intersections. I know there were a few in between, like, the primary impacts. Obviously, people going in and out of this are going to use those intersections.
Okay. When, when did you do this study approximately?
Like, we went from seven o'clock to nine o'clock in the morning and four-thirty to six-thirty in the evening.
Okay. All right, and I, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, when I, when I say when, uh, how long was the study, like in days or?
Yeah, we were, it was four days, we were out there for four days.
Oh, yeah. And it, was that recently? Was it this year? Was it last year?
Um, September two thousand sixteen. That's all we've been, you know, like, working on.
Um, if I may ask, maybe you went over this, did you use a particular technology to do the count? Were you, was it based on computer models? How did, you know, how did you, how'd you do the traffic count? I guess is my question.
You, you, you sit out there and with a board, with a count board, it's an electronic board, and count the vehicles and then turning movements from turns left, right, and whatnot, and that's broken down into fifteen-minute increments. So the, the highest four consecutive fifteen-minute increments, that's the busiest hour.
That explains why I didn't see, like, the little lines in the road. I thought, you know, the, how, how the police department does their traffic, so you have, like, the two things that bump.
Right, and the traffic recorder counts, we do those too, but in this case, I needed to know returning which records.
Right, uh, um, you're also aware, I'm sure, that there is a, a car, a commercial car lot on, on that road, on Belmont Avenue?
Yes.
Okay. Now, at least a couple of times a week, you have car carriers that park, at least temporarily on that street. Did you take that into account at all? Did you, did you see that, I guess, during your study?
Uh, I don't specifically remember seeing a car carrier parked out there, but I'm sure it happens.
All right, I mean, in, in your experience, do you think that would be potentially a traffic issue?
Uh, if there's a parking lane there, so as long as two-way traffic can get by, then you're, you know. I'm blocking the live travel lane, that's the police, I guess.
Yeah, maybe you don't know, say, uh, how big is that road, like, widthwise?
Oh, if I had to, I don't know specifically, so I don't know that much.
Would, would you agree it's basically a two, like, like, like a one-lane road going each way?
Yes, it's one-lane each way. It's, it's, uh...
Um, I'm sure you've done studies like this before. Have you ever had a, had a development, you know, done a study for a development like this on that kind of a road?
Yes, many, many times.
And you've already, and it, is it the conclusion you have right now, the same one you've essentially come up with on these other developments?
Not always, no.
Thank you.
Mr. Frank Antoni?
Uh, just one question, sir. The, uh, you said you did seven to nine a.m. in the morning and four-thirty to six-thirty p.m.?
Yes.
And you said you did on weekdays, correct?
Yes, we did.
Uh, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we did on Monday and Thursday.
Monday and Thursday, and then doing on Saturday or Sunday?
No.
One quick question. Uh, the scope of your work, do you also include various turning radii or are you just looking at, at vehicle counts?
Uh, in terms of the site plan?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, we look at the, the turning radii and advise the civil engineer if there's any issues.
Okay. I had to ask a question at the last hearing, dealing with turning radii, which was my concern about accessibility on the part of emergency vehicles in the triangular region between the two new proposed buildings, where that courtyard is going. And I was told that there was going to be some sort of breakaway gate and that the study had been done to guarantee that there was sufficient, uh, width and distance to get in there. But, uh, a couple of days after that hearing, and then we have Matt Kadashia, the Boa Times reporter, his article indicated that the valuable fire department, um, hadn't yet contributed to their, that analysis to verify that there was sufficient distance and accessibility between those, those two buildings. So I just would like to know, have you, have you engaged our fire department to make sure that with their current vehicles and equipment, that they can get in between those two buildings? God forbid that there, there's a need to address a fire.
I'm familiar with that, if I can answer. I don't need to answer questions, but we submitted a plan to Mr. Hands. Mr. Hands did a review and sent us a letter with, uh, the one concern he has, and Mr. Byer is going to testify as to that after this witness is done.
All right.
One of the term you were concerned about, Mr. Hands had a concern about the same term.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Any other members of the public have a question on this witness? If not, Mr. Gashar?
Mr. Byer? Mr. Byer, you recall even swarms?
Yes.
And do you have an opportunity to review the response from the available fire inspectors who are in hands?
Yes.
And can you tell the boards with regard to that letter, what he asked you to do and the results of what you did?
Sir? Evening, the guest.
So as was requested, the last hearing was, um...
Mr. Gashar, you're going to submit that, that letter?
Uh, sure, I got a copy.
Mr. De La Renta, a second.
Bob.
We got it, Bob.
He's got it.
We got it.
It's, it's the letter dated, uh, Mr. De La Renta, the letter dated April five, you had it.
Thank you.
Has that been marked as an exhibit?
The mark board is listed, uh, A1 with today's date.
Okay, the letter is A1?
I'm going to make this, uh... There's probably a report from the letter.
I don't...
Sorry? I don't know, whatever you want to do.
You, you tell me.
We'll take it as an exhibit, so...
All right, so if that's going to be A1 with today's date, then I'm going to refer to, what is, um, good, uh, mark is exhibit A2 with today's date, uh, four, twelve, twenty eighteen. This is a drawing that was prepared by our office, Dresner Robin, it's titled Fire Truck Circulation Plan, uh, and it is also dated April eleventh, twenty eighteen. So as was discussed in the prior hearing, um, there was about having the fire department review the application, see if they had any concerns or comments. Um, we didn't receive a letter back, and the only comment that was raised was in regards to, uh, a fire truck making circulation on the westerly side of Building A, which is the long rectangular building. Um, using a, uh, profile that's generated by a computer, we have inputted a fire truck into this area and, as you can see through the hatching, uh, that fire truck can safely, uh, make a left-hand turn circulation around the building, um, without impeding or imposing it at any of the parking areas or over any of the curb lines. Um, and then just to address the question from the, uh, audience earlier in regards to circulation between the buildings, um, I cannot testify to the architectural element of separation, but I'm sure that the license architect has specified that there is adequate protection between the two buildings based on their fire code review. Uh, and with respect to circulation, as I stated at the last hearing, there is a reinforced grass paving system that's provided between the two buildings that will allow for a fire truck or any other emergency vehicle to access between those.
There was a question the board members raised about snow clouding between the buildings. I believe there's an emergency access in between the buildings. Can you review how that would be cleared for emergency purposes if there were a storm storm that took place?
Certainly, um, as with any type of property maintenance where snow removal will be taken from sidewalk areas, it's going to be a means and methods determined by the property owner, but snow will be removed from that area to allow for emergency vehicles to access through there and stop in there.
I have no further questions on this witness.
Any board members have questions on this witness?
Um, two things. Um, with respect to the, uh, fire department, you were also supposed to get back to us with the recommendation for fire hydrants?
Sir, to request what from the app in, to the fire official to review for compliance and review comments, just as you would the engineer or planner. And the only comment, they did come back from the fire department was with respect to the turning maneuver on the, uh, northwest corner of Building A.
So there's no recommendation of, uh, fire hydrants?
Well, there's no comment from the fire department regarding that. And as stated in the prior hearing, there are existing fire hydrants along Belmont Avenue, as well as each building will be equipped with fire standpipes or fire department connections as you see in, uh, a lot of new buildings.
Mr. Harris? Uh, regarding to the fire hydrants, could you clear that up? Or like, what are they going to be?
I think when, when, uh, when they're coming for their permits and stuff, it's like, right, it might be standpipes and, uh, sprinkler system and that, so all that needs to be reviewed.
Mr. Walsh? If they're, if they're coming for plans?
Yes, my other, uh, comment as I was, um, talking, uh, with your environmental consultant about the, uh, flush curve...
That's a great question.
Well, as you said, there was, there was a flush curve.
I certainly talk, I certainly understand, uh, your question. And I'll refer back to exhibit A3 from the, uh, prior hearing, which is titled Rendered Site Landscape Plan. On the westerly portion of the property, um, we talked about, uh, at the prior hearing that there is a proposed carport area that has some parking beneath it. Um, and we are proposing that the curve on that area be a flush curve. And if you can imagine that the way stormwater management is taken care of on a site, is you have high points and you have low points. At the high points, water runs in one direction or the other, and the low points, that's where the water gets collected. So just referring to, uh, these stalls on the westerly side, uh, the last bankers stall, there is actually a, a small ridge line that's only taking a very small area of the pavement and diverting it towards that grassy area. That grassy area slopes down to a inlet, which then connects to the subsurface drainage system. The whole intention of that is not for the purposes of recharging any type of water, it's just to help reduce the peak flow. It just, grass slows the water down running through it. So it's just to reduce the intensity of the, uh, rainwater that's going to, um, get conveyed into the system.
So that water going up to the grass will not actually go and exacerbate the groundwater problem?
That's correct. That's, that's our, that's our opinion that it's not going to exacerbate.
Well, that's my concern.
Yep, and, and that's a legitimate concern, and that's the purposes of us asking for the waiver of providing groundwater recharge requirements from the D E P standards. The D E P has very specific standards, um, and criteria that you need to recharge a certain amount of volume of water over the entire site. Because of the conditions that were discussed previously with the environmental, that's why we've asked for that waiver. But the minor area that's going to flow over this grass is not going to exacerbate that groundwater condition.
Well, my other concern is I don't want the contamination to reach up, because that area is also where you have the bicycle rides and the dog park.
Well, the bicycle area and the dog park are actually upgrading of this low-lying area. And when we say low-lying area, I'm not talking about an area that drops down six or eight feet. We're talking, you know, a one-foot drop in the grade just to create a shallow open. So you're, it's not so excessive that it's going to encounter groundwater nor with any type of groundwater fluctuation, rise of bulk that is created in that area.
Any other members have questions? Anybody in the public have questions? Mr. Frank Antoni?
Uh, yes, Mr. Byer, at the last meeting, you said that, that center fine, the recreation or grass area there?
Yes, sir.
Of course, it was asked, uh, will the fire, uh, truck be able to hack in there? And I, I don't know, the fuel one is, is there going to be a, a breakaway fence?
It's not, it's, it, there is a fence, and again, I'm referring to exhibit A3. Uh, and with the laser pointer, I'm pointing, um, on the easterly side between Buildings A and B, uh, which is the rectangular and the L-shaped building for the board members on indicating this area here. Uh, this is a swing gate, so it's intended that that gate will swing and be... Uh, this is a swing gate, so it's intended that that gate will swing and be wide enough that fire trucks can get through that area. Um, that gate will be closed, um, whether it's equipped with a lock that the fire department cuts, or whether the fire department puts on there what's called a lock box, which you see on a lot of commercial areas, which has a key that provides access to the gate, but there will be no restriction from the fire department opening that gate up and getting access between the two buildings.
And, uh, differently, five-story building, approximately seven, seven-five feet tall? What are you talking about here?
I can't speculate as to what the height...
Well, assuming, you know, it's a five-story building, so you're going to need a ladder truck, and you're going to fire. But the ladder truck needs approximately 24 to 25 feet to put its outbreak, it's out to stabilize, but we're going to have that space in that little frame, but the truck has to get in, they have to fire a pipe on the inside of your building.
Still referring, uh, to exhibit A3, you will see that there are two dashed lines that represent an aisle, that is a reinforced, reinforcement that gets placed under the ground made of high-density polyethylene, a plastic, um, that supports traffic load. That high-density polyethylene mat, uh, is actually 24 feet wide, um, and again, this has been submitted for review by both the municipal engineer, it's also been submitted for review by the fire official, neither entity has come back to make comment on that, and again, there's still, should the board find approval, these applications still need to go in for a building permit, and then there's another level of review where should there other, be another concern brought up, it can't be addressed at that time.
So you're saying that green, yeah, through there, 24 feet wide, and there's no swings, playgrounds, no tables, picnic areas anywhere in that area?
I can tell you that as of right now, there's no playground in there, there is some recreational area, and that will be, uh, discussed by the landscape office.
Does that plan show the recreational?
It shows conceptual locations of the recreational areas, and those recreational areas, um, are within the area that's restricted to the tenants.
Is there any more, any more thought to, uh, recycling? Five stories of buildings, there's only a trash, uh, you know...
I'm, I'm going to, that was addressed at the last hearing, there is a internal building management plan that will handle the trash and the recycling.
Where will the bike racks be?
Uh, there are, there is a proposed bike depot area on the westerly end of the property adjacent to the dog park.
And what about electric cars? Recharge extensions?
This is now getting beyond the scope of the, I only go back for a limited purpose, but I understand the question, if you go to all three of these things.
Would another expert be able to answer this question?
Which question, I'm sorry?
Charging stations, and even for the residents, or, I thought he was the engineer for the building as well.
He was the engineer for the site, and he was already on a witness stand and now he's...
So it'd be the architect that would know about the, uh...
No, I testified last week.
Are there any plans to have charging stations for electric cars at this point?
No.
I think that's his question.
No. Sorry.
Any other questions, Mrs. Gash?
Could you clarify the swing gate? And if I understood you, the swing gate is going to be locked, and so in theory, the fire department would have to get off the truck, break the lock to get in or unlock it, does that make any sense?
It's standard practice, yes.
By whose standards, the fire department's or...
Ma'am, ma'am, it's no different than a fireman entering a building that's on fire, they still have to get through a doorway or a locked doorway or a lock.
Yeah, but they generally don't have a lock on a fence, don't, please, you know, my late father-in-law was a firefighter for 30 years, my brother's a firefighter, so don't tell me how firefighters get into a building, okay? Don't you dare say, kick, you know, it's a building, no, you're telling, you're saying it's a locked fence.
That's correct.
Okay, where is it written or where is it stipulated that a fence for this fire department to get in should be locked? Where is...
Ma'am, I'm not saying that it has to be locked, it's the plan that it is locked, and if you go to any public field, you'll see that baseball fields, football fields, et cetera, where they have a double swing gate where access vehicles can get in during those events, those gates are unlocked and they're opened up, or in case of an emergency where they needed to create an emergency landing zone or similar situations, for a helicopter, they cut the gate open and that's how they access the field.
Okay, but we're not talking about football fields, we're talking about...
Mr. Gash, I think it's a life and death situation, the fire department determines it, they'll just break the gate.
Oh, I understand.
If seconds matter, I think it's, it'll be designed, they could just drive through it and the landlord would replace it. I don't see that as an issue.
I, I hope so, because again, you know, fire, every second counts.
Yep, I agree. Isn't it more likely that an ambulance would need access to get in there?
Sorry, I can't speculate as to what's more likely, whether it's a fire truck or an ambulance, but I can tell you is that the area has been designed to adequately handle an emergency vehicle regardless of whether it's a police car, fire truck, or ambulance.
But you don't have a hook and ladder truck?
The, the, the question has been asked and answered regardless of what it is, if it's an emergency vehicle that can access through that area.
Do we have any more further questions? If not, we're going to move on to our next witness. How many more witnesses do we have?
Just one, just one. Last witness.
Point of order, it's, uh, five minutes to 10. I'll be fine with that.
Yes, that's the correct time.
Would anyone object if I just turn this more to the side so I have one set of boards and not two?
Just give us one minute, please.
Oh, Republicans, you certainly don't get time to do that. Well, I don't know what time you would want.
I also have to hand out to the pretty curious...
Okay, hold on. I'm going to place you on the road when you're ready.
I'm ready. Hi. Mark Anthony, busy, E.I., C.C., I.A.
Can you tell us what's your business address? Just go for it.
55 Lane Road, Fairfield, New Jersey.
And your occupation?
I'm a licensed landscape architect.
And are you licensed in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I'm licensed for the last 17 years in New Jersey, I've been practicing for 23 years, multiple licensed in New York.
Well, except your witness has an experience.
Thank you. What is your role in this project?
I oversaw the development and redevelopment of the land.
And review the street and parking lot?
Uh, so the plan is fully compliant with the, uh, the proposed development is in compliance with the redevelopment plan. Uh, one of the first items we needed to address was any project over 50, with more than 50 feet of street frontage, we needed to provide street trees along the front. Uh, Belmont Avenue, there were existing trees, uh, those are shown in the light gray, and then, uh, the darker trees are the ones we built in to replace dead, or dead trees or trees that have been removed. Uh, in addition, there was also a buffer required along Belmont Avenue for five feet, uh, which we provided, it's landscaped with, uh, evergreen shrubs, meeting the minimum height requirement, uh, per the ordinance. Uh, in addition, along Belmont Avenue, the parking, the existing parking used to extend actually into the city's properties, we've now pulled our development back, so in addition to our five-foot, there's about four, four-and-a-half-foot, uh, area which will top dress and seed and put lawn there, so it was actually like a nine, nine-and-a-half-foot buffer between each of the parks. Regarding the parking, uh, the ordinance required, uh, one tree for every 10 spaces, we, uh, more than complied with that, so we would have needed 40 trees, we're actually providing 58, uh, they're scattered throughout the, uh, the parking areas. They consist of red maples, honey locusts, willow oaks, hackberries, sorry, I'm getting confused, I think I got a face here. So we more than complied, there was also a minimum area requirement per tree, we needed 75 square feet per tree, we meet that minimum requirement. Throughout the rest of the area, there was also a buffer planting along the rail yard, we have eight-foot-high evergreen shrubs, uh, we also provide a double row of evergreen trees, uh, adjacent to the, uh, P.S.E.N.G. property, and again, I'm referring to board A3, that was creepy, and, uh, previously had third, two, and that's...
Would you continue to review the general landscape features?
Yes, all right, two things, uh, just want to get out of the way, we meet the requirement, we have a one-year guarantee on the plant material, uh, we're going to limb the trees up to seven feet, these are all requirements in the redevelopment plan, uh, all plant material is non-invasive, that was in the redevelopment plan, and about half the plant material are native to New Jersey, the rest are adapted. The project provides, uh, concrete sidewalks around all of the residential buildings, we're also providing, uh, new walkway connection between the residential building and the retail, which Bob Vira testified to earlier, all the landscape, all the islands in the parking lot will be landscaped with evergreen ground covers or, uh, perennials or ornamental grasses, we kept them low, stuff that kind of died back in the winter because you need some area to put some snow load before it snows. Uh, we have a open lawn area up in the, uh, westerly portion of the property, again, some area that can be used for some passive recreation, we provided a very detailed, uh, landscape courtyard between the two buildings, they'll have a brick paved sidewalks, uh, we provided five, uh, plaza areas that range in size from 15-foot diameter to 30-foot diameter, we anticipate some outdoor dining areas, passive seating areas, uh, maybe a fire pit and whatnot, that's all going to be, uh, fine-tuned as we go through the development, but those areas have been divided, those areas, oh, by the way, are outside of the 24-foot emergency ingress, that area with the exception of the sidewalks that periodically cross, has been kept clear for the fire, everything else would be outside. The central lawn will be used, again, for passive recreation, throwing it all around or just look very nice. So we think we gave a nice, uh, atmosphere for the tenants, again, it is going to be fenced, there'll be next tree gates, and then there'll be two, uh, on each side, there'll be two, uh, 20-foot-wide double swing gates, so, uh, it'll be more than wide enough for the emergency vehicles too.
You've talked about the retail and true plaza?
Yeah, so what we did is we provided some expanded, uh, paving areas in front of the retail, uh, they'll be paved with brick pavers, we left some areas, depending on what tenant goes in, they could put some outdoor seating or tables and chairs just to add to that feel and, uh, enhance the, uh, the space.
Is there a dog park?
Yes, up in the westerly portion, there is a, uh, 40-foot dog park, I believe, is the area, it'll be fenced in with a five-foot-high fence, there are also some, uh, we, Bob had previously mentioned, there are a couple of carports, they will have green roofs, an extensive green roof on top, and what an extensive green roof means, it's a shallow soil requirement, they're planted primarily with seedum plants, which require very little water, typically they're plants found above the tree lines in the mountains going out of the cracks and rocks, so they, they can survive in environments without a lot of water.
Are there bike racks?
Yes, there is a, uh, a bike depot or a lot, a bike, a bike lockers located directly adjacent to the bike, uh, to the dog park and between the carports.
Would you review the lighting?
Yes, so we provided LED lighting, which is energy-efficient lighting, typically about 40 or more percent more energy-efficient than your standard high-intensity discharge. No one's making the high-intensity discharge lights anymore, so it's almost an obsolete question, everything is LED, um, in the parking lot areas, so we have a couple of different zones, the parking lot areas will have a, a LED shoebox-type light, about 20 feet high, uh, in this main portion, they'll have dual fixtures or a double-headed picture with a, a, uh, show here, you can see it a little better, right after this, this is the drawing C701 that was submitted as part of the site plan application, so it's not a new drawing, is that pre-entired or...
It already has pre-entired.
So you can see we provided a shoebox lighting in the middle, along the perimeter, we went with a type-three distribution which throws the light wider instead of further, and, uh, that's provided along all the perimeters of the parking. The central courtyard, we dropped the height of the lights down with a 10-foot decorative post-top light, again, it's LED, and we're also providing some building-mounted LED lights, uh, to pick up the light levels on the sidewalks. Uh, along the existing, uh, retail center, we did add some new building-mounted LED lights to be more energy-efficient and replace the current lighting that's on the ground.
Did you have an opportunity to review the report for Mr. Harris, the consulting engineer?
Yes.
And any comments with regard to that report?
Yes, we are going to provide irrigation for the landscape, so all the landscaping will be irrigated, uh, there was a question about site triangles, we think we're okay, but we've allowed the site triangles onto the plan to confirm it, and if there's any discrepancy with the height of the landscape, then we'll make the adjustment to drop it to the ground, but I think we're okay.
Any further comments on Mr. Harris' report?
Uh, there was some question on the lighting, we'd like to keep the lighting where we stand in the parking areas, there was a, an incorrect notice to the footing for the lighting that's in these parking areas, it was noted to have the foundation that wasn't raised above the parking to be protected from vehicles, we're going to correct that, those lights will sit on a two or three-foot-high concrete pedestal, we prefer to keep them where they are, we think we have very good light distribution.
No further questions, his witness, Mr. Kim.
In your professional opinion, is there enough green space for this project?
Yes, yeah, this is, uh, more than adequate, I think it's about 15,000 square feet, uh, five different areas, they'll have a mix of uses that they need to use. In addition, there's also an outdoor rooftop terrace for the residents as well.
Any members have questions on this witness? Not anybody in the public have questions for this witness? Mr. Francis Antoni?
One, uh, Belmont Avenue, trees along the, currently, what kind of type of trees?
There are a bunch of, uh, calorie pears, and then towards the end it gets down to a cherry, uh, some quanzaon cherries.
Cherry quanzaon?
Uh, I believe quanzaon cherries.
I would object to that, uh, we have double planted, uh, 5,000 trees, one tree goes over the path, on the contractor, my ladders and my rack roofs, it's not really a question, I go do a job, no, I can't park it, these, these trees don't grow that high, and I don't think they belong, they're beautiful trees, they're posh inside, but at the curb, we need something that grows above 10 feet to branch, because...
We were matching what was there, if the board wants us to consider a taller columnar virgin, I think we'd be open to that, but we were kind of matching and filling in what was there.
Well, I know you don't live in Belmont, but there have been a lot of controversy about the cherry park and seeing plenty of all of it.
Well, there's, most of them are, most of them are pears until you get down to this end where they turn into cherries.
Many of them have to be removed, two of one in front of my, one in front of my neighbors it was, and they lived up the sidewalks, they need more air, they belong in the park, so I hope that along Belmont Avenue, change something that grows a little higher, and there's been a lot of controversy, uh, over the years, I think about 15, 20 years ago, they planted, uh, people and, and type, but I can tell you, you can't park trucks, moving trucks, trucks, delivering trucks, you've got these trees, the branches are six feet tall.
Yeah, we, we're going to limb them up to seven feet, which is what the, we've got.
Any ginkgo trees?
No. No, I'm proposing no.
Any evergreens?
Yeah.
So where are the other evergreens?
Yeah, so this is a row of evergreens and this is...
What exhibit are you referring to?
To A3.
Oh, yeah, on the other end.
Correct. So these provide the visual box.
But not through the complex?
No, we also do have some evergreens mixed into the courtyard. Some of this parking is open, so we provided some low evergreens and some trees to buffer the base of it.
So hedges, shrubs.
Yeah.
Now, all of these trees, you're putting in out in the parking lot area, and also over there. How high are these trees going to grow?
Depending on the varieties, forty, fifty feet. Typically, in urban environments, they don't get as tall or as fast.
And how deep do they root to?
Typically, trees root in the top three feet, twenty, twenty-four to thirty-six inches, unless you have a taproot, which typically grows that. So they typically grow wider.
Because you testified before about a barrier.
Correct. So this is very common. A lot of my projects are in Jersey City, which most of Jersey City waterfront is historic fill, and this is a condition we do need to meet. So the bottom of the root ball will have to be placed twelve inches above the historic fill. And whether we excavate down so that we get the depth where we raise the grate up, we'll have to set the bottom of the root ball twelve inches plus the cap, the barrier, the buffer.
I just can't understand how it's going to work because it's six feet deep of polluted soil that is going to have a cap on it. So I don't understand where the, where the tree is going to be planted.
Some soil, in order to institute some of the controls or the buffer and barrier, we may have to remove some of the soil off-site to get that, or we have to bring the grate up. But it will be above it. So if this is the historic fill, we're going to have to put a demarcation layer, which is, this is the D-mark, it's typically like the snow fence, and then whatever the, the institutional controls, the...
Engineering controls.
Some different, I'm sorry, I forgot.
Where's the irrigation going to be?
Everything will be above the cap.
I mean, the irrigation is going to run, how's it, the pipes going to run for the irrigation?
The pipes will run. Of course, the pipes in the winter will be blown out and turned off in the winter. They will be placed within the buffer and barrier.
So all, everything's going to get to water?
Excuse me?
Everything, water?
The plants will be water.
Right. And now, what about sodium chloride?
What about?
It kills plants.
Some salts are more, some plants are more sensitive to that, but not in the maintenance of the area. You know, we could work with the owner, we could work with an alternate facility.
The entire large parking lot there is going to be...
But it's no different than any parking lot anywhere in the Midwest that has to deal with snow.
Most of them don't have trees, though.
Every parking lot, pretty much. I can't say every parking lot. Most parking lots have ordinance, most towns have ordinances that require trees of parking lots. I don't know that you're advocating that we remove the trees from the parking lot, but they can handle. The trees that are specified can handle.
I'm just wondering if there's any way to keep the sodium chloride from killing the vegetation?
Some material is more sensitive to others. We haven't selected that plant material. And if that's a maintenance issue, if they're over-salting, then that's, that's a problem.
Sodium chloride doesn't hurt the trees.
Then that's something that we can write a...
But it's more expensive, so it's something that'll be built into the program. So you're a landscaper.
Landscaper, yes.
So you didn't know what kind of environment is needed to...
Yeah, the urban environment does provide a tougher environment than if it was grown in the field, but the plant material that we've selected is suited for this area or does well in this area.
Thanks. Any other questions from the public?
Don't further witnesses, Mr. Chairman. My case is complete.
Counsel, would you like to sum, first, would you like to...
I'd rather wait until after.
Till after?
Should be, of course.
Does anybody in the public have any comments at this time?
Yeah.
Mr. Frank Antoni?
Now, we're going to swear everyone in where you can make your comments. Point of order, how late are we going to go?
We're finished. Good, Mr. Frank Antoni. If you have somewhere to go, you can leave. I mean, it's, you know, six hours of testimony so far.
And I've been here for it.
Good. Mr. Frank Antoni?
Will you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and let them know the truth, so I'll be done?
I do. He told the housekeeper, I think, looking at the tape of the last, two weeks earlier, Mr. Comte made some statement before he heard all the witnesses that he fought this project. It sounded like he was a representative of the applicant, and I just wanted to put that on the record, bars, conflict preventers and more. Now, this, the testimony here, that's the applicant in shape of pilot for this. Pilots are killing this state, and I quote from the state control, this is my time for testimony, I can say whatever I want.
You can, you can, but this board has nothing to do with anybody. There's no application before this board having to be a pilot.
But it was stated that he may seek a pilot.
But who do you think of this board?
Well, I have every right to say why the board should approve.
Can you just sum it up, Mr. Frank Antoni, please?
Pilots are hurting this thing. This is the state controllers office, the boxer report. This is New Jersey's municipal tax abatement program is pulling critical funding away from school districts and leaving tax credit to pick up the cost. And it's three or four pages of all the other detrimental things that tax, that pilots are doing. And the other thing I'll address, because the council, I don't know, Mr. Gensheron, has to approve pilots, they're the ones. But we have a council member on the board, and I didn't bring it so that the record shows on this case, to the big Clark thread complex in East North. They just went in there and they wanted a pilot, and they held it up a couple, the council held it up for a couple of years. The borrower refused to grant one and finally got it blanked. They're doing a big development there without a pilot. And then Bloomfield just got a big tax increase. My two sons are getting killed in Bloomfield. They both live in Bloomfield. And the Board of Education President Schmidt wondered reason for the large increase. The rateables in town have been obliterated. There's a lot of building going on, as you said, but it's the pilot programs and tax abatements. A lot of the development, but hardly any money is coming to the school district. So they heard us. So if this thing needs a pilot, and many of the projects, they say, the pilot, the project's not viable unless we get a pilot. Well, then we don't need it. And just for the record, the initial one of that, we're not against. I and others agree, this is an area in the development. One of your members, Ms. Shore, state public, put in a hearing, she agrees it's an area in redevelopment. But, which very emphatically says, not for residential and not for schools. And that's what I agree with. So you can get some manufacturing, commercial stuff on here. You're not going to put people on there. Now, this is not ancient history. This is just from April 5th, 2018 newspaper. I've been following, I don't know if you people follow, Edgewater, it's called the Quanta Site in Edgewater. Honeywell, it was a contaminated site. And ironically, the same thing, our environmental expert, it's got volatile carbons, arsenic, lead, hydrocarbons, all the same problems that they got here. Well, the EPA, the federal EPA, allowed Honeywell to cap the site. And that's why, yes, the expert knew what the pain and weight was. They allowed to cap the site, similar to here, and why is your consultant interested in capping? Yeah. So they capped it. So what happened? Nothing came up through the cap, but what happened? It went sideways and to the adjoining property owners, right? And it says here, the, with tons of, the, instead of removing the toxic and all, it led to a problem with vapor intrusion into the surrounding buildings. So that's why I asked all the experts, if you're familiar with the east side of Belmont Avenue, all those houses there. We're going to cap this site, we're going to build concrete foundations and contain that stuff, but you're not going to contain it, especially with a high water table. What's going to happen? It's not going to come up. It's going to go sideways. Of course, the fact there was a, a court case on Heckel Street, a resident sued for his property being contaminated by that Edison property, and he won successfully. And that's Heckel Street, a block away. So imagine when all this thing is, this cap is on there, the contamination is going to go somewhere. And this is current. It's called the Quanta Site over there, and they had to stop. The cap didn't work. So they were excavating it to now remove it, but there were going all kinds of fumes, the neighbors big complaints, and they had to stop the site. Again, not ancient history, and ongoing problems. The, in regards to the expert on the traffic congestion, this is from our own master plan we're reviewing now. And it says that the, one of the problems in the reexamining rate report was traffic bottlenecks at key intersections. And then it goes down to a couple of Franklin Street, Belmont Avenue intersection, and studied by Essex County as part of the light rail improvements. This intersection still suffers from traffic congestion. This is counted from our planning board renewal. So the expert went there during the week. That's a little busy. You know, stores do a lot of business on Saturday. I don't know if you've been down Saturday. You go to Aaron Park. I think, Mr. Vannery, you know Dennis Walt theory. I stopped there to see his mother's ill a couple of weeks ago on Saturday. When I left, you know where he lives, a couple hundred feet, I get to Belmont Avenue. I mean Belmont Avenue, I get to Franklin. Sat there for four nights. No more wonder, light rail, and you know, when the train crosses, that stops everything there. Nobody, like I think, Mr. Walsh, or somebody recommended that you leave space, you did, for the fire department. Nobody follows those laws. Nobody gives you a break. Traffic bottled up, four lights, I just sat there. Nobody moved. You put the people on the balcony, block the box, and this is constant if you're in the area. I know you don't have a parking lot, but your business at the end of the dead-end street, you park on the street and you park on a town property. But the rest of us, the rest of us have to park. But those are actual conditions. He should have gone there on Saturday, a very busy day, which the other expert testified, Saturday is the busiest shopping day of the week, right? And we've got severe problems with the traffic on that intersection. The other issue is density. Back in the seventies, there, we're complaining, our density was twenty-five units per acre. Everybody in town, we're complaining, this is becoming another inner city of New York. We took action. We reduced the density to sixteen per acre. A few years later, we reduced it to twelve acres, so we could stay a nice suburban character. In all those years, if you look at our tax bills, and I got fifty-one years of tax bills, the relative tax increase is stable. The more development you get, like in Bloomfield, my son, you know, about ten years ago, seven thousand thousand property taxes. They built all these high-rises, all this new revenue, all this tax is now over eleven thousand dollars. So all this doesn't do anything to our tax base. It increases demand for services. And, and they don't pay their fair share of it. And like my two sons, again, this is personal. I'm not giving rhetoric, I have actual value to this. My four son bought a storing house, we restored it, and taxes almost doubled at this point. And that's not what this year's tax increase is doing. The Paramus rejected multifamily housing, and they approved a little one on a two-acre site, seventeen and a half units per acre, not twenty-five like this proposed one at all. The Cambridge Heights, everybody love that, big development, another. You know what the density is there? Nine and a half units per acre. Essex Park, Franklin Avenue, right? Go to the dense. That's eighteen point five units per acre, not twenty-five. This, on this street, and now a street like Belmont Avenue, twenty-five units an acre, it's too much. The other issue is this lightweight construction, all right? It, it's really, now, let me tell you, this just come out, the population density, thing by the, by the state. Bellevue, we're only three point three square, we are the density of ten thousand eight-hundred and eighty-seven people per square mile. However, if you take out our golf course and our Bellevue Park, it equates more, but they're considering the whole three acres. Bloomfield, which appears important, it's only eight thousand, eight hundred per acre. We're the highest in Essex County, except north, and not much, but north is eleven thousand per acre. Nutley's eight thousand per acre. Nutley's so far more lively, flat-story monsters in their town. So this density is a real issue and all that. The lightweight construction, I think you all know the Avalon Fire in Edgewater, right? The same company, Avalon, in Maplewood, my wife and I, we were at Princeton, next morning we were up there, the thing burnt, that whole section burnt to the ground, was under construction. It's lightweight construction got stopped. And the construction, here's our construction code changer overdue. Our trend politicians are more paid for by the developers, so they will change the code. You've got Vincent Prieto, the Assembly Majority Leader, who just resigned to take a good job, he introduced a bill to stop this lightweight construction. It's, it's a vent for fire to go right through and burn out. I mean, you've got those trusses, all you got to do, that bottom cord breaks at one point, everything collapses like in the Edgewater Fire. Luckily, that was in the middle of the day, to do it at night, you would have had some deaths on there. But the thing burnt to the ground until it made a picture paper. So that's another reason for not having. The schools, density, this farce about not bringing kids into the schools and all that, there's a state report that high-density apartments produces one child pupil for every fifteen units. This would be sixteen kids. However, some of this testimony is not right. Cambridge Heights, that was going to be for empty nesters and people, you know, no kids in the school system. I think they estimated from ten to fifteen kids would be reduced. Right away, it was seventy-three units. Newspaper article just about a year or two ago, Cambridge Heights now has a hundred and sixty-three students in their school system, not the ten to fifteen that were proposed.
Single-family homes in that development.
The East Gate Center on Center Street in Nutley, that was also proposed to be millennials that don't want kids and all that. Well, in just five years, they went from ten students to forty-one students in a five-year period. So this thing, and again, I own several pieces of property, you rent to a couple, a one-bedroom apartment, a hundred and nineteen-square-foot bedroom, which is nine by thirteen, and a nice young couple. Well, a year later, they had a kid. What did I do? Pull them out. A year later, they had another kid. They lived there for eight years, one-bedroom apartment with two kids, all right? Second-floor apartment. They had two girls in our school system, all right? And again, so when you say, oh, the one-bedroom apartment, don't produce, and you've got right up the street here, the Walter, I mean, the Crossford Valley Bank, the, the big art deco farm building. Customers come in my lounge, all right? One room of farmers, three kids. Some of the old-time residents come in and complain about that. So this fallacy, in reality, the experts say, one-bedroom apartments, don't produce kids and all, they got to get out in the trenches and look and see what's going on, all right?
You almost done, Mr. Frank Antoni?
Yeah, I'm almost done. The, so that's the fire safety law. The final thing I have to say, the, today, just today, the record, I'll end it out with this. Bruce Lowery, the editor and columnist for the North Jersey Record, did, we start off, just read the French paragraph, "The question is why? Why must it all be for sale? New Jersey's waterways, its air, its land, and its undeveloped land. Nothing, it seems, is sacred when it comes to powerful developers and political types in the city, only green. Green, the color of money, that is, not the green to be found in New Jersey's state parks or its ever-demonstrating public spaces. Rather, the green coal..." Rather, the green coal, the green of cold hard cash. New Jersey's political class doesn't just see this thing, they're blinded by it." So please, you people are planners. Let's plan for the proper future of Belleville on behalf of the 36,000 people and residents of tax base that you represent, and not the developers who want to take this cash. Now, one of these developers that proposed it, they want to live in there. It's beautiful. They described luxury apartments, it's inside door. They don't want it, there's any way to make these places. So please, do what's right for the thing there. The scenario need to build, let's get some commercial, let's factor something in, not resident, which is going to be extremely detrimental to the township.
Thank you.
Just sum up. Well, sorry, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and help me die?
Yes. Pamela Fleisch from 132 Franklin Street.
Gentlemen, to sum up, I think everyone can agree that the abandoned area does need to be redeveloped and, you know, made pretty, okay? I think the biggest stumbling block is the amount of units they're proposing, apartment buildings, or, excuse me, apartments. If they would consider lowering the amount of property for the apartments, I don't think anybody in this room would have a problem with it. No one is against development. Everyone wants Belleville to grow. The town council, the zoning board, the planning board, everybody wants our level of little town to grow. I think the biggest issue is the number of apartments. If, again, if you guys can talk to them and, you know, come up with something, maybe from 232, maybe start at like 150, and then see what goes from there. You know, because there's other areas in Belleville that can be developed. You know, just consider that, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and help me die?
Yes, I do. Frank F. Fleisch from 132 Franklin Street. Gentlemen, the developers have, and Mr. Gassillon have done their job in showing what this development would conceivably be like. You, as an appointed board of this municipality, have the responsibility to ensure that development is responsible, that it fits in with this municipality, that it doesn't negatively affect this town. And you're supposed to represent the residents of the town. Honestly, looking at this, I don't think that this is a very good development. I wouldn't be opposed if the developer was proposing simple commercial retail to see how that would work. And perhaps after that, they could start investing, perhaps in additional apartments if we felt that the infrastructure and the town could bear it, okay? If Belleville was bigger, then honestly, 2.2 square miles, because you have to take out the golf course and the parkland that we have. And if we didn't have almost 36,000 people living on those 2.2 square miles, I would say, okay, maybe this is not a bad proposal. Some of the other things that I would like to speak about is you had a traffic expert speak here, doing the study of Belmont Avenue between Blomfield Avenue and the Franklin Street intersection. My wife and I live about 250 feet away from this proposed development at the corner of Franklin Street and Magnolia. We can say without reservation that the traffic situation there leading into Belmont Avenue, down Franklin Street, that sort of thing, is, to put it lightly, atrocious, okay? I can say honestly, because I'm the one who drives in the family, there's been more than, more than a handful of times that I've had to park out in front of my building, because there really is not a lot of parking and so forth. I wouldn't say there's no parking, but it's very limited. But there have been times where I've opened my door just as some yahoo in the other lane decides, well, I've gotten too impatient with waiting for the light, around the light to change. I'm going to shoot into the opposing lane and then go on to Magnolia Street. I can't tell you how many times I've even gotten killed because of that, okay? So to say that there is not a traffic issue in that area is, it's inconceivable to me. And I can't imagine that this development will not add to that, even if we are going to be, even if the development is catering toward millennials and the younger generation, or even empty nester to a certain extent. And I have something to say about that as well. The engineer, I'm sorry, the architect rather, spoke about how this is going to be constructed with lightweight, you know, lightweight wood frame construction, okay? Firefighters hate that. They can't stand it because it is an invitation to ablaze, as was seen in the Avalon projects in Edgewater and in Maplewood. The reason why they call it matchstick construction is because it really takes a matchstick to basically ignite the whole thing. And it's fine you put sprinklers in, it's fine you have, you know, fire retardant doors, that sort of thing. That doesn't stop a fire, or it doesn't suppress it. You still need professionals to go in there and take care of it. And honestly, I don't know what the fire chief's opinion is of this development, but I could probably tell you that the firefighters probably aren't too happy about it, simply because it's going to take a lot of manpower and a lot of equipment that honestly, the township, you know, I don't say fails, but like in Magnolia, it lacks to a certain extent, is going to be used to fight a major fire in a development like this. Let's talk about who this development is going to be aimed toward, okay? Millennials, okay? The idea that millennials are going to live here, use the light rail, you know, to go shopping, entertain, that sort of thing. It sounds great, but it's a gamble. It really is. And the other thing is that, the other possibility, and this is the justification that has been put together for the Avon development in Blomfield, is that, well, we'll have people who commute into New York to do this, which is all fine, okay? Blomfield has a Midtown Direct, and that, you know, that works out pretty well there. The problem is, is that I think we're going to have a transportation crisis probably in the next few years because we have to update our transportation, our rail transportation, the big gateway project we're talking about, okay? Right now, we have a federal government that is, to put it lightly, hostile to New Jersey. And I'm not sure if we're going to be getting the funding that we need to go ahead and improve transportation in New York and New Jersey. And if that happens, if our transportation infrastructure fails, something like this is going to be a bust on that alone, alright? The other thing I want to talk about millennials to a certain extent, the idea is that, well, something like this, they're going to go over to, you know, to the Super Fresh and shop, and there's going to be a gym, they're going to use that, that sort of thing. If you look at trends these days, our millennials are eating at Whole Foods or Wegmans or Trader Joe's, that sort of thing. Super Fresh is not a brand that I would say appeals to the sensibilities of today's millennials. Also, a lot of them do their shopping online. You know, the nominee for Labor Secretary that Trump put up initially, who was the CEO of Hardee's and Carl Jr.'s, said it very well. He was looking to automate all of his restaurants. Why? He was appealing to millennials so they could go in and just order on a computer. Because millennials don't like face to face contact. They like to put it to a computer, have it sent, have it made, and take it out. Basically, the product is made and they can walk away with it. I don't know if this is going to appeal to something like that. I mean, maybe it will, but again, I think it's a big risk. Finally, what I would like to say, oh, I'm sorry, also on the parking issue, we're talking about shared parking, okay? My wife and I are living zams of shared parking because my landlord owns a business in Silver Lake. And he has a parking lot in the back that during the weekend on Saturdays is for his customers. So there's been a few times where she and I have been at home, and we've had to park in the stop and shop lot because there's no parking anywhere in Silver Lake during the day, at least near where we live. So you gotta give shared parking. Okay, well, there'll be a certain amount of parking for customers and for residents. Sounds great, but I don't think in real life it quite works like that. Finally, as something very personal to me, and when we're talking about smart growth, that sort of thing, one of the things that smart growth, the smart growth checklist from New Jersey Future speaks about is the question of, does the development fit into the neighborhood? It's historical, it's historical character, excuse me. Honestly, looking at the buildings, no, it doesn't, okay? I was on the Historical Preservation Commission for a short time, but I take it very seriously. This development, looking at Silver Lake with its single frame homes on 25 foot lots, small businesses, that sort of, this sticks out like a sore thumb to me. If I can just say one more thing, as far as the construction is concerned, I was wondering where I'd heard the name Pinnacle Companies before, and I finally figured it out. Pinnacle Companies was one of the partner, co-developers of the Sienna Montclair. And if you want to do a Google search on that, right now they're, well, not right now, but when they were opened, there were problems with drainage, with flooding in some of the units, to the point that the condominium association of the Sienna filed suit against Pinnacle Companies and the partners inherited, the inherited company that helped build it. Now, what the disposition of those are, I'm not sure. And I hate to pick that sort of thing, but Mr. Stolar was actually mean to one of those lawsuits. So if we're talking about wood frame construction that could possibly, you know, leak or, you know, degenerate after a certain amount of time, guys, this is a loser. I'm sorry to say. It's not right for Belleville. If it was any other time, if you were in any other place, if we had a bigger town or less population, maybe this would be great. If the developers want to resubmit a proposal for strictly retail or commercial, I don't think anyone will have a problem with it. But the residential part of it, I don't think is going to be a winner.
Thank you, Mr. Fleisch.
Thank you very much.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and help me die?
I did.
Say your name for the...
David Yen.
Thank you.
So I'm here representing the Sierra Club as well as being a resident of Belleville. I was asked by residents to come, show our support for them. New Jersey Sierra Club opposes this mixed use residential development project in Belleville Township because we are concerned about the people living on a toxic site that is not properly cleaned up. Capping, the toxic metals will fail. It will only put more people at risk. The project is also too dense for the site. The town needs to go back and plan for the site so that it is the first property cleaned up and restored, and then come up with a proposal for development that would fit in with the character of the community. We are gambling with people's futures. The toxic site will not be safe enough even to work on. It's going to be a danger to the construction workers. It's going to be a danger to the neighborhood when their work is being done. Soil and groundwater samples taken from the Belmont Avenue property indicate higher than standard levels of toxic metals like arsenic, mercury, and lead. So no, it is a polluted site. It is a toxic site, and it isn't okay. The Belleville Planning Board should step up and create a cleanup plan for this property with input from the town. There are contaminants at the site in both the soil and the groundwater, and no one wants to see Belleville Township become a toxic community. The plan encourages overdevelopment on a toxic site that has not been properly cleaned up. Development on this site will increase runoff and flooding to surrounding areas in an area that has traditionally historically been an area of flood zone. We're calling on the Belleville Planning Board to reject this dangerous sprawl project, that it would be a disaster for the town. The proposal will only bring in more pollution and traffic congestion. I think that there's been a lot of points raised that the applicant has not answered. And I think, you know, you board members are much more experienced at this than me or any of the public. And I would think you would want to have all the answers. I mean, Belleville, I'm getting the impression is really anti-environment. There's no concern that new construction should have solar. There's no concern that we have charging stations for electric cars. We're going to be going for electric cars, more and more people. So it may be a time, this may be the time. These developers have the money. Maybe we can have this done right. Have the site remediated, have them come back, have them address some of the concerns Mr. Fleischman raised, that, you know, maybe office building would be good there, some other stores, health club, things like that. But having it as a residential area with 232 apartments just doesn't make sense. We've never heard how much these apartments are going to rent for. We don't know that, do we?
I think that's irrelevant.
What?
I think that's irrelevant, how much to rent is. That's free market system, whatever the market...
So you're telling that certain types of people will live, the applicant is telling that certain types of people will live there, but they're not telling us what they're answering. So that's about it. Okay, thank you.
I think I was swearing, but can I do it again?
We swore you wouldn't make your statements. You're still under oath.
Thank you, thank you. You know, we're all very tired, it's very late, and we all want to be out of here before the sun rises.
Well, then, don't talk. Just say what you're going to say.
Thank you.
We know what time it is, and we know we're tired.
All right, I'll keep my comments brief. Thank you. At the very beginning of the testimony on March 29th, as a member of the Belleville Board of Education, I asked Mr. Stolars if he had made any projections about the impact this development would have on our school system. And as usual, we get the standard response from developers, minimal if any. Just want to bring to your attention that two specific cases in point here in Belleville. Franklin Manor, which just went in online at the beginning of last year, which was advertised initially as senior, but as Mr. Frantonie screamed at the board, at the council, at every opportunity, don't call it senior. It's age restricted, 55 and up. But nevertheless, in just the, with it opening up within the last year, already has three students in our school system. Essex Park, which for many years, I've listened to present, previous planning board members and council members saying, Essex Park 2, very little impact on our school system. Currently has 26 students in our school system. I can go, I will, I'm stating this for a fact. I know I'm under oath, but I'm also part of the boards, redistricting committee. I have all the current enrollment data, and I just ran these numbers a couple of days ago. Franklin Manor has three kids in our system. Essex Park currently has 26. Now, inevitably, as Mr. St... Now inevitably, as Mr. Stoller submitted on the 29th, he will be asking the council to consider a pilot for this. I know it's outside the scope of the planning board, this is the purview of the council, but this is going to be coming and it's going to be yet another impact on the Bellevue school system and a further burden on all the homeowners, taxpayers in Bellevue. Second comment, I think it goes without any question, any argument, that we all agree that this site is heavily contaminated. Without a full remediation, it's suitable at best for commercial or retail, not for residential. I would implore, I beseech the planning board, before you make a vote on this matter, hire your own independent qualified environmental engineer, your own LSRP if necessary, someone who doesn't have a horse in this race. Let them tell you in an objective way, if this project planned for residential makes sense for not only the sake of current residents of Bellevue, but for future generations. None of you want in your golden years to be held responsible for residents of this complex suddenly having a hotspot for cancer or other maladies. Now, even if you go ahead and approve this project and the council gives its thumbs up as well, I want the developer, all of the people connected with this project, to understand that those of us here are my fellow activists, Mr. Frantantoni, the Fleischmans, Mr. Dory, who has been critical, helped us, Mr. Mattingly, et cetera, we are prepared to put together a website which will run for perpetuity, having all of this information that we've assembled over the last year and a half with the state of the environmental contamination of this so that future residents of this, if it's ever realized, your millennials, if you will, who are very climate savvy, can immediately learn about the history of the site and decide if they want to live here. So we'll let market forces prevail in the end, but I want Mr. Stoller and all of his associates to understand that if you give approval to this project tonight, it doesn't quite end here. We will make sure that for perpetuity, anyone living anywhere in Bellevue, especially in this site, has access to the history of this piece of property. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Any other members have a comment? If not, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, just a couple of comments, starting with Mrs. Frantantoni. He's talking about this, your density complies, there is no variance being sought, everything about this application complies with demand for service. Certainly, every project requires a demand for service, but this will certainly lead to benefits to the town or tax money far exceed what it will cost for service. He talked about Cambridge Heights and the density. When he talked about that previously and asked questions of my witness, my witness pointed out that there are 2,600 square foot units and certainly there are going to be more schoolchildren from 2,600 square foot units. These are nothing like that. We even have micro units in here. So it doesn't compare. Essex Park doesn't compare in size. These are small units. What we're looking for are young couples and older couples. Certainly, we could have somebody that had a child or two, but it's not expected in the size of these different units. Mrs. Fleischman talked about needs to be small, so again, we comply with the number of units. Mr. Fleischman talked about it being the board responsibility to check the negative criteria, et cetera. That doesn't apply here. There are no variances being sought. This is a site plan approval. Negative criteria is not relevant. Traffic issue. Obviously, any development's going to have traffic. That goes without saying. But we had a traffic expert say that we're not going to change the level of traffic if this application is approved. There was a discussion about material. The witness does not have expertise in the material and we will be co-compliant no matter what we build. The Super Fresh, he's talking about it not being a popular store. I think it's wonderful that there's a food store there to replace the bathmark and it's available to the people in the area. Talking about no parking. Clearly, we've had testimony that shows the parking. The percentages of people that don't own cars in Silver Lake makes it clear that this is not a problem. In addition, we have 145 more spaces than required. Says it's not right for Bellevue. Bellevue needs a new development. Bellevue needs something like this. Look at some of the other communities that are grassing, nothing, for example. New building after new building. We need it. We are in need of it. Mr. Yengel, he represents the Sierra Club. He's talking about it being a toxic site. We had an LSRP here who gave excellent testimony and explained exactly what is here and he talked mainly about historic fill, which is all over northern New Jersey. I've handled numerous applications that have historic fill. And as was appointed out by your council, this is an application without variances and yes, you can condition it upon the appliance or the DEP or the LSRP, but it is not the jurisdiction of the board to turn down an application because of environmental, because it's not regulated by the board. Mr. Yengel said we hadn't given the answers. We tried to give every answer we could. Mr. Sheldon, who's a board member, a board education member, talked about Essex Park and the number of students. Again, Essex Park has much larger units. These are not those kind of units. In addition, he talked about 26 students, but he never said the number of buildings. He said for Franklin Manor and three students. Again, he never said the number of buildings or units. And briefly, this application is blocked. We have a parking census that was taken, again, I'm not going to repeat all the information because it shows that there is a complete reduction with regard to demand for vehicles and the 75% parking that is set in the ordinance is appropriate, but we have 100% parking for the residential and we have over 200 spaces for the commercial. 100 plus more than required. Shared parking, yes, there'll be some shared parking in certain circumstances, it's beneficial. We're right next to the light rail. It certainly is a transit building concept. We can use it, but we will have Uber lift available, like everybody does. The turning radius was brought up by Mr. Hands, that was explained by the engineer. Again, 100% compliant application. Again, state environmental regulations are clearly going to be administered by the LSRP and the EP and we will comply with it. The path market been there for many years. There were no problems, I know. You're going to improve the situation of Bellevue if this application is approved, this conforming application is approved. It's a new development, you're going to have residents, you're going to have the food store be approved, you're going to have a gym, hopefully, you're going to have a coffee shop. All these things and the green area and new development will be a boon to Silver Lake. I thank the board for all the time and attention, for the two extension lines of gift. Thank you.
At this time, a member like to make a motion for the approval of this application with Mr. Everett's recommendations?
This will be a motion for preliminary and final nature of second plan approval.
I'd like to make a motion for approval.
Ballast call, Ron.
Mr. Vanier.
Yes.
Mr. Sealy.
Yes.
Attorney in Canada.
No.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
No.
Please, the application's from 4/2.
4/2, the application's...
Thank you for your time and attention.
Someone like to make a motion to adjourn meeting?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Meeting is adjourned.